Audio check.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the February 14th, 2023 City Council Successor Agency Council Meeting and Special City Council Meeting beginning at 6:00. We do have a quorum. Could I get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Mendoza?
Here.
Councilmember Meyer?
Here.
I mean Vice Mayor Meyer?
That's okay.
Sorry. Councilmember Orlemans?
Here.
Councilmember Pearson?
Here.
Mayor Bryant?
Here.
Okay, at this time, we will open public comments. I'll turn it to you, Margaret.
At this time, the public is permitted to address the City Council on items that are on the closed session agenda. If you're in person, please file a speaker card with the clerk. If you're participating via Zoom, please raise your hand. Remarks are limited to three minutes per person, and your microphone will be muted after the timer has expired. I received two written public comments on this item that were submitted prior to the meeting. One from Amy Tilly of the Downtown Brentwood Coalition and one from Becky Bloomfield of the Contra Costa Wine Growers Association. These comments have been posted on the City Council's website. And I have no speaker cards for this item. And... Oh. Oh. I do have one speaker card for this item. It's from Amy Tilly.
Hello, and thank you for having me. I'm just... Oh, just move this guy up like that? Okay. Ooh, first time. Just the whole thing. Okay, there we go. All right. Well, hello and greetings, Mayor Bryant and Vice Mayor Meyer, and thank you, City Council members, for having us today. I'd just like to read a letter that I went ahead and submitted to you guys regarding our thoughts on this meeting. So tonight, you'll be reviewing a brief presentation and a proposal regarding the Downtown Brentwood Coalition's interest in preserving the Brentwood Women's Club building and our desire to use this space to serve the community in new and impactful ways. The Downtown Brentwood Coalition would breathe new life into the building and use this space to welcome locals and visitors. Having a visible and accessible home base for our downtown-based nonprofit will help foster economic development in the downtown and in nearby areas. If we're granted use of this building, we would use this space to conduct important work of enhancing and maintaining the vibrancy and vitality of downtown Brentwood by supporting the small local businesses that call downtown their home. The intention of our proposal is to begin a discussion with you just regarding this concept. We're amenable to discussing various courses of action outside of our proposal that the council may come up with this evening. 648 Second Street would act as a visible commitment to the downtown as an important part of our community fabric, and it would continue to serve as an amenity for residents and visitors. It would serve as a collaborative space for small business owners and nonprofit partners. We would meet and workshop concepts and initiatives that serve our community. We would promote and display collateral materials regarding community offerings, services, and nonprofit initiatives, ag tourism, and business support resources. These are just a few ways that the Downtown Brentwood Coalition plans to engage the community and support our small businesses. We'd be happy to provide a more detailed report on the many ways that we would continue to serve the greater good of the community with tenancy at that building. The Coalition has supported and served downtown for over 15 years. So it is a little interesting. There's not a home base down there at this time, but we would love for that to be... for that to happen. And to increase our offerings and support levels and our impact, we think it's time that there's a dedicated space to continue that work. And we're requesting to do so at 648 Second Street and allow the building to continue to serve and preserve Brentwood for many years to come. We truly appreciate your time and consideration of the staff and the council on this matter. So thank you, and thank you so much for having this meeting tonight.
I have no additional speaker cards or hands raised in Zoom.
Thank you. At this time, we will close public comments, and we will adjourn to closed session at this time. Do I need a... I think I need a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Yes, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Yes, you do.
We have a first.
Second.
And a second. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. We are adjourned. Thanks.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the February 14th, 2023 City Council Successor Agency Meeting. We are reconvening from closed session. There is nothing to report out at this time. Could I get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Mendoza?
Here.
Vice Mayor Meyer?
Here.
Councilmember Orlemans?
Here.
Councilmember Pearson?
Here.
Mayor Bryant?
Here. And could you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this time, we will open public comments. I'll turn it to you, Margaret.
We'll take public comments in the council chambers, followed by Zoom public comment. If you're in person, please file a speaker card. If you're participating via Zoom, please raise your hand under public comments. At this time, the public is permitted to address the city council on items that are not on the agenda. Items listed under Presentations, informational reports are on the consent calendar. Requests for future agenda items near request, please save your comments for any other items that are on the agenda for that part of the meeting. Remarks are limited to three minutes per person, and I do have three speaker cards for the chambers. And I'll start with Rakesh Wagh.
Respected Mayor Joel Bryan and city council members, good evening and namaste. My name is Rakesh Wagh, and I'm a proud resident of Brentwood City. Today, I want to briefly share the recently concluded sixteenth annual Health for Humanity Yoga-Thon, a nationwide event organized by Hindu Swayam Sevak Sangh, also known as HSS, a nonprofit socio-cultural Hindu organization with over two thirty-five branches in one sixty-four cities and thirty-four states, including the state of California. HSS conducts a Hindu value education program for Hindu families and community service activists such as food drives, providing hot meals to shelters, and other service activities. The Health for Humanity Yoga-Thon event began on January fourteenth and concluded on January twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-three. Sun salutation is a traditional yogic practice that involves moving through a series of poses that flow together in a graceful continuous sequence combined with breathing exercises. Since its inception in two thousand and seven, participants from forty-three states have actively participated irrespective of their genders, races, ethnicities, nationalities, and faiths in achieving spiritual, mental, and physical well-being, making it truly a diversity, equity, and inclusion event, a D E I event. It was recognized as a part of congressional record in twenty seventeen. Acknowledging the community benefits of this initiative, the Let's Move Initiative of then-first lady Michelle Obama, declared HSS as a partner in twenty twelve. This year, two thousand one hundred participants, including HSS members, yoga studios, local schools, and other community organizations, participated in the HSS Health for Humanity Yoga-Thon from Contra Costa cities and performed total of seventy-one thousand five hundred and fifty-one sun salutations. Students from nine schools across Contra Costa performed more than twenty-five thousand sun salutations. Six other local organizations joined Health for Humanity Yoga-Thon and performed five thousand seven hundred and seventy-six sun salutations. I am delighted to report that during a whole-day Yoga-Thon at Edna Hill Middle School in Brentwood, one thousand plus participants performed more than fourteen thousand sun salutations in a day. We have also conducted several train-the-trainer sessions for Brentwood's elementary school P E teachers so that they can conduct sun salutation sessions throughout the year for their students. Health for Humanity Yoga-Thon has received numerous proclamations from mayors, governors, U S congressmen, and U S senators, including the Brentwood City. On behalf of Hindu Swayam Sevak Sangh, we would like to thank you for your support and recognition of the sixteenth annual Health for Humanity Yoga-Thon event. Dhanyavad, and thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Danny Dormin.
Good evening, residents of Brentwood, city officials, and members of the press, including KCBS, KRON, and the Contra Costa Times. I'm Danny Dormin, proud resident of Brentwood since two thousand and three. When Mezural came up, I grew concerned about the expanding of the limit line, losing our promised open space and farmland, destroying what makes Brentwood Brentwood. In twenty twenty, I created an open forum interview for any and all Brentwood candidates running for office. In the last two election cycles, candidates for school board and council have taken me up on this nonpartisan venue. It was never about me, except my disappointment about the planning committee appointment process. My focus is and always will be about Brentwood until tonight. People call me many things: pops, papa, that guy. Now I get to add the unprofessional bully that uses buffoonery to get his point across: Councilwoman Pearson. Your comments last week made about me. And you don't know me. The irony is, one, you use these inflammatory words during a meeting that was supposed to denounce that type of rhetoric, and using a direct quote from your website, "My name is Patita..." I'm sorry. Which means reconciler of differences. "I intend to reconcile differences in Brentwood and support our resident city and local businesses," your quote. Where is that support and where is the reconciliation? You may have heard of me. You might even think you know me. Maybe you heard, "I give loving descriptive nicknames like the Quarter Million Dollar Man and Mr. No Comment." Both of those names and others grew from real observations about involved parties. Am I a bully? Am I one who habitually and cruelly insults or threatens others who are weaker, smaller, or in some ways vulnerable? If you knew me, you'd know that I protect the vulnerable, and I never seek harm. Yes, I've been called out by Albertino. I told him in one session, "I'm Danny Dormin. I'm your worst nightmare." And I've called out Shay Holmes for forcing seniors to pay upwards of twenty thousand dollars for a doggone privacy fence. And I've called out staff on multiple occasions for their apparent lapses in judgment or faint comprehension of plain speaking residents. I do not perceive those entities as weak. On the contrary, they have too much power, and I wish I had the fun.
The speaker's timer has expired. The next speaker is Mike Kleeman.
Good evening, council. Happy Valentine's Day to staff, council, members of the public here. It was kind of cool to see everyone congregating before the meeting and rushing in their Valentine's Day dinners with their spouses. That was cool to see. So I prepared, I don't want to get too emotional tonight, so I prepared something that had bothered me. I didn't get to attend the last public meeting. But it's frustrating to discover that once again, the city manager has let residents down. I had learned that the city manager had recently asked members of the city council to target specific individuals of the public and to discourage those individuals from speaking during council meetings because he feels that his integrity is being called into question. And I'm here to say, yes, your integrity is being called into question. That is why we are here. That is why we want to make our voices heard. In my opinion, I'm no expert on constitutional law, but I'm pretty sure this is an infringement on my First Amendment rights. So I want to paint a picture for why residents like me, residents like us, come to these council meetings. We have been discouraged with previous city councils. We've been discouraged and by previous staff members. And I just want to paint a picture for what would it look like if members of the public like me and Danny and others weren't allowed to come and speak at these meetings? This is what it would look like to me. Under the city mayor's leadership, probably the city would have hoodwinked the residents into passing Mezural. I don't think anyone would argue against that. The city would still continue to rubber stamp every single rezone that an applicant has brought forth to the city council, every single one. And I know that's been his plan all along. The city would have sat by and done nothing when it comes to the oil rigs that developers wanted to put a thousand feet from our homes. They would have stand by and done nothing. Council members might still be on the take. If it wasn't for residents like us and Danny and others that are listening tonight, council members would probably still be taking tens of thousands of dollars in campaign contributions only to line their own pockets and do favors for developers. The city would probably be still accepting in lieu fees instead of focusing on inclusionary housing and affordable housing for members of our public. That's where we would be if members like me and members that are at home listening and participating here.
The speaker's timer had expired. I have no additional speaker cards in the chambers. I do have three hands raised in Zoom. I'll call on Cenziana Todor. Cenziana, go ahead.
Hello, good evening. Even running the risk to possibly be sued, called a buffoon, or fake news, I have few things to say tonight. As per instructions from the consultant hired last week, I'm focusing on problems and issues, not necessarily on persons. Thank you, Mayor and Vice Mayor, for calling out the fact that last week's session was a waste of time and money. Maybe not in those words because you're more eloquent than I am, pastor, and I recognize that. And emphasizing the fact that you are all elected to make the best decisions and be leaders for our residents and city and not make friends, have social hour, eventually wine and crackers in the city council chambers, and always agree on everything. I notice and I take issue that we have council members who don't want to hear what the public have to say while consistently mentioning in their rhetoric that they are very open to hearing from residents. I'm quoting one of our council members, who wants people to talk more, not less. I would add, she only wants to hear compliments from the public, not to discuss real issue policy or perception of conflict of interest while pushing items to disenfranchise, defund, and shut the residents out. For someone like me, growing up in a communist regime, I can recognize socialist tendencies to quiet the masses so the powerful can get their way and do whatever they want. That is not the new flying brand. Consent calendar number C three. How do we miss on a purchase order to include tax, fifty thousand dollars? You've been asked so many times, city staff, that money-related issues should not be buried in consent calendar. If this was an agenda item analyzed at large by all eyes looking at a purchase order, the purchase for whatever we need would have not been delayed at this point. And I would like to ask the newer council members to take note that this is a clear example amongst many others why the residents don't trust up. If you miss such a small item, what else can we miss? Can they miss? So please take note when other items come in front of the council and ask for full detail. Why are we commingling on item D one, money for two separate objects, wastewater treatment and biosol is drying and system equipment for implementation and S B one three eight three? This should be two separate CIPs for tracking, financial reporting, and showing clear and clean financials to our taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Carolina Villaseca. Carolina, go ahead.
Good evening, city council. Happy Valentine's Day. I would like to start by saying that the field across from Pioneer is still not mowed. One part is shoulder-high, the rest is at least knee-high. The little yellow flowers are in bloom. I would also like to remind you that there are kids at Pioneer that have asthma and allergies. We have three generational families living all around that field who also suffer from the same maladies. If there is someone I need to call, please somebody tell me who to call. I'll be happy to make the call. I will call them every day if I need to to get that field mowed. Thank you. Advice, number two, advice for the two new members. I'm not sure who you're getting advice from, but this advice is having some bad consequences for you. Changing things without doing homework is having some unintended consequences that you may not be aware of. It is imperative that if you change something, you understand how it got to where it needed to be changed and why it is the way it is now. Changing how we elect, how we appoint commissioners was a huge issue. And I resident actually told you what meeting to go and look at so you could get that information. About the wall, that is another thing. There were several meetings where this was covered at length. I would ask you both to get in your cars and drive for and actually take a look at the houses in question. If you can see their front door, which you can, you will notice that means that there's no buffer between your car and their home. And it's not just the two homes, which was very disingenuous of city staff to say that are affected. There's an entire neighborhood there. Sound does not travel the two homes only, and neither does pollution. So the unintended consequence is that city council will not be trusted to keep their word. So please, please, please do your homework. The last thing is, the last vote on Shay, the project that Shay brought. I want to remind everybody here that Brentwood, like all the other cities, are under the gun to meet those housing element numbers. There is an organization called YimbyLaw.com who gets their jollies from suing cities. Right now, they're doing it over paperwork. If you didn't submit your housing element, you're getting sued. If you submitted it, it was approved, and you're not in compliance. You're getting sued. So tonight, we're going to talk about this again. Please, 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 let's be collegial. And if city council asks questions, city staff, please have the answer. We need to get this done, and we need to vote down projects.
The speaker's timer had expired. The next speaker is Carrie Rizer. Carrie, go ahead.
Hello, good evening, and happy Valentine's Day, and thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I am Carrie Rizer, and I am a director speaking on behalf of the Brentwood Chamber of Commerce. I'm sorry I'm unable to be with you in person this evening. The chamber would like to thank councilmember Orlamans and Assistant City Manager Gail for attending our first ribbon cutting of twenty twenty-three at the Silvergate Apartments. Your presence was appreciated not only by the chamber, but also by the management and developers of the Silvergate property. We would also like to thank councilmembers Mendoza and Pearson, as well as Vice Mayor Meyer and Assistant City Manager Gail for their attendance at the community meeting number one for the Sand Creek Sports Complex. Your insight and contribution was valuable, and your openness to hear from members of the community was appreciated. The Brentwood Chamber of Commerce is excited for this project as we believe it will bring more business to our community, and we look forward to participating in the community meeting number two next month. Finally, we have two upcoming events this week we would like to invite you to. First up, our February Chamber Mixer, which will be held on Thursday, February sixteenth, from five thirty to seven at the Little and Brave, which is located in the streets of Brentwood. And on Friday, the seventeenth, we will have a ribbon-cutting ceremony for the new business called Angry Chicks from eleven to twelve, and Angry Chicks is located at twenty-five hundred Sand Creek Road, Suite A. Thank you again for your time, and we look forward to seeing you around the community. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no additional hands raised and no additional speaker cards.
Thank you. At this time, we will close public comments. And we will move into presentations, item A one. And tonight, we get to have the privilege of presenting a presentation to former mayor, Mrs. Barbara Geis. And former mayor is just one of a very long list of titles that she has served our community in. And so Barbara, if you are willing and able, if you could meet me up here at the podium. It's so wonderful to see you. And I'll give you the microphone in just a moment. Barbara has had forty-eight years of active public service in Brentwood. Barbara was the first elected to the Brentwood City Council in nineteen seventy-four and served until nineteen ninety-eight. She served as mayor from nineteen eighty until nineteen eighty-two. Barbara's passion for providing transportation options for Brentwood residents led to her service with Tri Delta Transit's board from their incorporations through twenty twenty-two, where she where she served on behalf of the city of Brentwood. And I will let her tell you how Tri Delta came about. Thank you, Barbara. Here's.
Well, we knew that we needed some transportation. The Chamber of Commerce, however, didn't like the idea because they said everybody would go out of Brentwood to shop. And I said, oh, no, they'll come into Brentwood to shop. And that's how it started. It all started basically in my kitchen, and we designed the original following the Liberty Union and High School school bus route. So anyway, I'm real proud of Tri Delta because now it takes care of not only Brentwood, but Oakley and Pittsburgh and Antioch. So it's a good service. So anybody want to try it instead of using your car with high cost of gasoline? Now use the bus.
It is my tremendous privilege to present in recognition of all of her many years of dedicated service to our community. For her selfless dedication and in bringing public transportation to East County while serving as the city's representative to Tri Delta Transit from 1977 until 2022. Barbara Geis, the city thanks you.
I did this out of the love of the city of Brentwood, but I do appreciate the rescue nation. But I still did it just because Brentwood is so special.
Thank you, Barbara. Happy Valentine's Day. At this time, we'll move into item informational reports from council members, committees, liaisons, and staff. This time, I'll start at my right, Councilmember Mendoza.
I was not ready for you. Okay, it's been a busy few weeks. So attended the CalCity's Housing Committee meeting, went to the local elected luncheon, was invited to attend a San Ramon meeting around oil and gas since we actually took a strong stance against oil and gas a few years ago. Meeting with constituents about the Tennessee police incident. Actually, I got quite a few calls about that. So I'm happy that people reached out, and thank you, Chief Herbert, for reaching out to people that wanted to speak about it. Let's see, local elected meeting, which is Cali interagency meeting. Fantastic talk with the community college. We've talked a lot about the youth and how we can get them more involved. I brought up a program that is college for kids that they do at DBC, so something for the kids to do during the day during the summer. It's not for credit classes, but you know, Spanish, English, photography, things along that line. So hopefully, we can get that started here at our Brentwood facility. Attended the soccer complex meeting, and that was a long meeting. It ran from 6:30 to 9:00, and I want to thank all of the residents. I think we had over 30 residents that were there that night. And we had, in addition, I think Darren said about 50 online at the most, I think. So I want to thank all of the residents who came out to that, and the feedback was amazing. So thank you. Attended Chinese Lunar New Year celebration downtown. It was touching to see, I think her name is Karina, the president of the club, who was almost in tears. She was like, I didn't expect this many people here. So thank you, everyone in Brentwood who showed up to celebrate Lunar New Year. A bag committee recaps, local elected call with state comptroller Fiona Ma. And Fiona Ma said that if we're not happy with a lot of things that's going on, we should sue the state because they are unfunded mandates. So that was her suggestion. Watched the city council workshop with ILG. I want to make something clear because the paper reported something. I did not show up because I had a scheduling conflict. I did not show up because I was not happy with the way that meeting came about. So that's why I didn't go. Let's see. Attended a City of Torrance resident meeting also about land use. Attended the CalCity's mayors and council members department roundtable. Attended a meeting at the Liberty Union High School District with the mayor to watch a presentation from Improve Your Tomorrow, which looked like an amazing program. I hope that we can get something done at Liberty. And I also referred them to a trustee on the Brentwood Union School District Board so that they can talk to them as well. Had Art and Park and Rec Commission interviews last night and attended the CalCity's roundtable around homeless and what we can do to help that.
Thank you. Councilmember Pearson?
Yes, thank you. So very full two weeks. I attended the school interagency meeting with Councilwoman Mendoza. It was very insightful, and there's a lot of stuff going on with those McDonald's. Then leaving there, went over to the the community meeting on the Sand Creek Sports Complex. Found that a lot of the residents had so many wonderful ideas that had not come to forethought, but they were amazing. So it was nice to hear from everybody exactly what they want to see in that location and really excited about what's underway. Attended the PAL meeting with Councilman Orlemans and our chief, and that was an amazing meeting. Just, I don't know if everyone knows, there is a nonprofit that's running right now by a officer and someone from our mechanic and a person who's his wife, who's in education in our city. And what they're doing, they're taking students from Liberty High School, and they're giving them the opportunity to learn the trade of working on cars. But they're helping provide services to people who were affected by COVID or who are currently still affected by the upcoming recession who can't afford just to get their cars fixed with us living in a commuter city. So we just heard about wonderful things about that. And then about the upcoming chili and barbecue cook-off that's going to be, that happened. That was amazing, that happened. So that was great. We learned about all those things. Attended the very end of the Lunar New Year event put on by the Youth Commission. I thought it was spectacular, amazing to see the kids and what they could do. I'm looking forward to more of the Youth Commission events that are coming up. I went to see Aladdin right after the Lunar New Year event. I went over to the New Theater at Bristow, the Mel Geddes Theater, and saw Aladdin, the first performance. And what a dynamic job our youth put on in the Aladdin show. I participated in the governance training last week put on by ILG. I met with Director Bruce Mulder and Councilman Orlemans. And to find out more about what Parks and Rec does, I met with Mickey Saboda and Casey Whitechurt at the MSC building and learned more about our wastewater, our recycling, and our purple water and waste processing, which was very interesting, a lot of fun. I had a few emails with residents really concerned about the construction going on on Big Basin Drive and Smith Road and informing them that that construction that's going on is by Brentwood Unified School District, building the elementary school on that location. Also, I met with Senator Glaser. It's quite a busy two weeks.
Thank you. Councilman Orlemans?
I don't know why, I thought we were going to go straight down the lane. Okay. I was over here kind of going, oh, well, should I? Anyway, I had a pretty eventful few weeks. I started off right after the last council meeting, attending my first Tri Delta Transit Board meeting. It was extremely interesting trying to figure out where I fit into that. That board is going to be a minute, but I'm out there learning as much as I can and getting out within the public. I did go to the Silvergate Grand Opening, which just happened to be the same night as the transit. I just stopped by afterwards. It was amazing. It was really nice seeing all the people attending a great grand opening. I didn't know it was the first one of the year, but it was awesome. Already in the calendars for the chicken restaurant that's opening up on Friday. I did attend the soccer complex meeting, but I did it on Zoom as opposed to attending in person. I got a lot of information. It was a lot easier for me to gather the information. And I think I got to hear a different perspective from the people on Zoom because we didn't cross over very well. So being on, or at least having some of us there, I thought was beneficial. I did attend the Lunar New Year celebration, and that young lady being that excited that the people showed up made it worth anybody showing up. It was amazing. The ILG city workshop, I thought it was beneficial. At least we attended, we got information, and I don't think it can ever hurt to get an education. If you think you know everything, then you're probably in the wrong place and you really don't know everything. You can get a little bit of information if you can take one piece of information out of a training session. No matter how small that piece of information is, it's better than not getting it at all. I did attend the PAL Board meeting, and what Pat Tanisha was talking about is the Give Back Garage, which is run by Officer Rucker, and it's amazing for an officer, full-time working patrol, to have that kind of time to commit to teaching kids how to be mechanics and how to take care of that garage and how to take care of their tools and have the responsibility to be able to do that is amazing. I've always known Mike was a great police officer, but I didn't realize he had all that extra time to do all those things. It was great. And then finally was the PAL BBQ, the cook-off down at the Harvest Park Bowl, and it was amazing. The barbecue was, my chair just dropped. I was thinking we were having an earthquake or something. Anyway, sorry. The barbecue was amazing. The food was delicious. I met a ton of amazing people. You get to walk around, eat food, and talk to people. That's what I do. So I was right at home. I had a blast, got to meet a lot of people I didn't get to know or hadn't known in the past. We did finish with Bruce Mulder and Mickey with our orientations of all the different groups or organizations within the city. Great information, truly enjoyed it. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Meyer?
Thank you. I attended the point-in-time count of our homeless population. This is the second year I did it, mostly to be able to say that if I'm trying to learn about the homeless of Brentwood, I need to, you know, walk the walk. Kudos again to Sergeant Peart. Please share that. He does an amazing job, Chris Peart, in truly understanding the people that are living on the streets of Brentwood, what their histories are, who their connections are. He does things like if a family member from outside of California wants to send something to a homeless person here, he will facilitate that. Core came, we were actually the host of all of East County. So all of the cities in East County came to the Brentwood PD to do the count, starting at 5:00 in the morning. And I have to say, I was disappointed because we had a core partner with us on staff who managed our app, which means you get to an incident, which could be a cart, a pile of clothing, some sign that a homeless person had been at that site, so that's an incident. And you get to people, and every time you see a person, you clock one way in an app, and then you see an incident, you clock it another way. We saw five people and six incidents, and this is in our specific segment. This year was different from last year in that last year, we went through the whole city. This year, we had a very small segment. So we saw a total of five people and six incidents, and when we got back to the command center, the running count that was showing on the screen showed that our segment had 23 numbers on it. So I questioned it, and the Core staff said, that's because you saw 23 incidents or people. And I said, no, we didn't. They actually had been pushing the app too many times. So I mention it because I think there is some user human error in the count. I also have heard from Core that our numbers are also reflective of someone who ends up at a shelter, say, in Concord, and they say, where are you originally from? And they say Brentwood. So the numbers that you're hearing, last year, I think it was 90, if I recall, is that right? This year, Sergeant Peart was projecting it was going to be higher. And it's not the number of the people that are living on our streets. It's the number of the people that are living on our streets plus people that identify from being from Brentwood from at shelters. It's people that are couch surfing or living in a car. There's a lot that goes into it. Again, Sergeant Peart does an amazing job. I need to just really give him a shout out on that. And I know that he's been working really hard with Caltrans to try and keep things clean along the freeways. We've got a lot of calls about that. Also attended the elected women's lunch and heard from elected council members primarily from around the area, California Alliance of Local Electeds, the Sand Creek Sports Park State Holder Meeting. I want to shout out a couple of the people that are here right now who attended and took part in the table discussions that were hugely helpful. And we went back and forth and tried a lot of different scenarios and wrote a lot of different notes and priorities. So thank you. There are, I think, three of you here that were there, so thank you for that. Mike and John and Denise. The Lunar New Year Festival and Karina from the Heritage Chinese Culture Club who hosted it. Fantastic. They did a beautiful job. I also have to thank our town Brentwood because he came, Steve came to the event and took some wonderful, wonderful pictures of community members and the students and the families. And there were so many people just thrilled to be together and recognizing what Karina and her group had done. I attended the CalCity's City Leaders Summit Planning Meeting to review speakers and presentations for the annual CalCity's conference in September. I did attend the ILG training, which I did at the time and still think that it was premature, and I didn't think it was as necessary as some thought. I facilitated a CalCity's mayors and council members roundtable meeting discussion on the use of the statewide listserv engagement and public comments at policy committee meetings, practices and protocols at council meetings, review of the new mayors and council members conference in Sacramento. And then I attended a CalCity's roundtable discussion on homelessness. Thank you.
Thank you. Since the last time we met, I attended the Arts Commission as well as Park and Recreation Commission interviews. And it's always great to have such talented people that live in our community that are willing to avail their expertise and time to make our community a better place. I attended the Police Activities League BBQ. Also, I attended the Liberty Union Improve Your Tomorrow meeting with councilperson Mendoza. And I will tell you, talk about some dynamic young people that want to make a difference in people's lives that have a more difficult road a lot of times than others. Many from single-parent families, from challenging circumstances. And I'm really excited about the potential opportunity for the school district, the city, to work with groups like this to help our community. I also attended the Transplan meeting, the Equifa meeting, the BART meeting, as well as the State Route for Bypass meeting. At the State Route for Bypass meeting, we got an update on the pedestrian bridge that we're watching slowly form over the bypass. And the news is, yes, the weather and the rain delayed it, but it is expected to be complete in September. So hopefully, the weather continues to cooperate so that that will be completed in September. And in the East Contra Costa, the Equifa, it's financing the transportation, the roads in East Contra Costa County is basically what this does. We are in the process, tomorrow will be another special meeting to get this done, to complete the reprioritization of Sand Creek. So currently, Sand Creek Road is complete from Deer Valley to the borders of the city of Brentwood. And we also have been approved last year from Equifa to get the funding to complete that, to connect it from Brentwood to the Antioch. So very soon, and understand I'm using government terms here, very soon, according to the state and county, we will have a complete road, Sand Creek Road, so that our residents can drive straight down Sand Creek to the hospital, to Kaiser there. It could literally save five to 10 minutes, which could save many more lives because of that. And so it's something that we've been working on for many years here in Brentwood, and it is finally coming to fruition. So that's good news. I also attended the ILG training and as well as mayor's conference and where Vice Mayor Meyer and I were. We attend so many different things. I know we leave. We attend so many different things, I know we leave things off the list. But during Mayor's Conference, I got to have meetings with local mayors, the mayor from Oakley as well as Antioch and Pittsburgh to work together in a regional effort to capitalize on each other's strengths and bring economic development into our area more quickly. And so that's something that happens, one of the things that happens at Mayor's Conference. I also attended the Tri-Delta Transit Meeting as well, and I know there's two or three others that I have forgotten that I attended, but that's all I have to report at this time. So at this time, we will move into consent calendars. Do I have a motion?
Can we pull C2 and C3, please?
Okay. Do I have a motion for the remaining?
Motion to adopt consent calendar except for items C2 and C3.
Second?
We have a first and a second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Excuse me, Mayor?
Yes.
I need to read the ordinance title.
Thank you, Margaret.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Brentwood amending Section 2.48.020 of the Brentwood Municipal Code pertaining to the appointment process for arts commissioners.
Thank you. Councilmember Mendoza, item C2?
On C2, can we just go over the financials? It says it's coming from the general fund, but we have the LADs. Can we talk about how we pay for that? Like, because it says it's coming from the general fund. So what portion is general fund? What portion is LAD? Or is it all LAD, but it just said general fund?
Sure. Mickey, do you want to tackle that one?
Sure. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. LAD covers lighting and landscaping improvements, street improvements, sidewalk improvements. Those are covered by general fund.
So that means this $40,000 every year is incremental to our general fund? Like, that's going to be every single year going forward, then? $40,209.33, or how much of it is?
That's for the total amount, I believe.
Total amount?
Yes.
And how much is general fund every year? That's not?
Approximately $7,300.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Okay, with that, do I have a motion on C2?
Make a motion to accept D2? I mean, C2, sorry.
We have a first?
Second?
Second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry item C3.
And then, sorry. B3. No, I'm sorry, not that one. I'm just going to make the motion to accept C3. I picked the wrong number.
We have a first?
Second?
And a second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. Any unanimous? Moving into business items, item D1, it's a resolution regarding an agreement for the purchase of equipment and services associated with BioSolids drying system and related amendments to the CIP and operating budget. And I'll turn it to staff.
All right, thank you. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, members of the public. Tonight's staff is before you seeking approval to enter into an agreement with Misco Water to procure a BioSolids dryer and pyrolysis system, to amend the wastewater treatment plant expansion CIP, and to amend the 2022-23 operating budget. This BioSolids drying project is part of the wastewater treatment plant Phase II expansion, which has been in the works for a long time. So let me give you a brief history of the project and how we got to this point. Construction of the existing wastewater treatment plant was completed in 2003. Because the city was growing at such a fast pace back then, the CIP projects to expand the wastewater treatment plant and expand the BioSolids drying system were included in the 2003 and '04 CIP book as soon as the initial construction was completed. As you can imagine, a lot has changed between then and now. Development has slowed drastically, and the city was able to delay this project to expand the wastewater treatment plant and the BioSolids handling system. If you fast forward to 2015, we were finally able to begin the project by selecting an engineering firm for the design work and applying for the SRF funding from the state. Funding approval from the state was a very tedious process that took about four years, but was ultimately successful in the form of a 1% loan for $65 million, which included a grant for $3.8 million. During the four years between their SRF funding application and approval, staff was able to complete the engineering design for the project, which included a conventional thermal dryer for BioSolids. However, during that design process, staff became aware of a new technology called pyrolysis that showed promise as a better long-term method for BioSolids drying. So we elected to make the BioSolids drying portion of the expansion project a bid alternate, which would allow us additional time to research the pyrolysis technology. In 2020, the city received three construction bids for the treatment plant expansion, with the successful bidder being about $7 million lower than the other bidders. The bid alternate for the BioSolids drying portion came in $23 million. Staff elected not to award the bid alternate and to continue looking into the pyrolysis technology. This slide illustrates the estimated cost for the projects over the years. Prior to fiscal year 2010 and '11, the estimated costs were basically placeholders since we did not have design information in which to base the estimated costs on. In fiscal year 1415, staff decreased the scope of the treatment plan expansion, which considerably lowered the estimated cost for the project. But by fiscal year 16 and 17, we knew that the BioSolids process tech, project technology would likely change, so we eliminated the standalone BioSolids project and combined it with the wastewater treatment plant expansion. As details of the wastewater treatment plant expansion and the BioSolids handling projects were developed, the estimated costs continued to increase. We awarded the wastewater expansion contract at the end of fiscal year 1920, during the beginning of the COVID chaos. In addition to the rapid increase in costs for raw materials like steel and concrete, the cost, availability and lead time of specialized equipment like pumps, motors and electrical gear caused significant delays in price increases. These combined factors have resulted in the need to amend the overall funding to complete the CIP project. It is important to note that this increase in funding will not affect the general fund. In addition to the price changes throughout the years, the available BioSolids processing technology has also changed considerably. The wastewater treatment plant currently uses machines called belt filter presses to concentrate waste-activated sludge from half a percent solid to 15% solid. This changes the BioSolids from a liquid form to a solid form that can be loaded into a truck and hauled to a landfill. The original plan was to expand this system since we are located close to several landfills, and the hauling and disposal fees were reasonable at the time. However, the same Senate Bill 1383 legislation that requires us to remove organics from garbage also requires us to stop taking BioSolids to landfill. So the belt filter presses are no longer viable and other alternatives are needed. The first alternative we looked at was adding anaerobic digestion and finding land application areas. Anaerobic digestion would produce what's called a Class B BioSolid, which makes it possible to apply the BioSolids to soils on local farms as fertilizer. This option comes with significant administrative and regulatory requirements and limitations and is dependent on the agriculture community to remain viable. Ironically, farms that are certified organic are not allowed to use BioSolids, even though the state specifically defines BioSolids as organic. This further complicates options that include land application. Staff researched and visited several facilities that have thermal drying equipment and ultimately settled on what is called a paddle dryer. The thermal drying process would work in conjunction with our existing belt filter presses by taking the 15% solids and evaporating the remaining water until we're left with a 90% dry Class A BioSolid. This is the option that was included as a bid alternate in 2020 when the treatment plant expansion project went out to bid. The newest drying process called pyrolysis also produces Class 8 BioSolid that is 90% dry, but does so in a different way. If we compare pyrolysis to paddle dryers, paddle dryers are relatively compact machines that use natural gas to heat a thermal fluid in a heat exchanger to dry the BioSolids at about 450 degrees for a short duration. Thermal drying process would be in addition to the existing belt filter presses, and it would take the 15% concentrated BioSolids and evaporate most of the remaining water until the resulting BioSolids are greater than 90% dry. Thermal drying has three problematic drawbacks. The first is it requires lots and lots of natural gas. The second is we still have to develop a land application market for the BioSolids. And lastly, it doesn't remove any emerging contaminants. The pyrolysis technology operates at a much higher temperature, between 900 and 1,400 degrees, and at this higher temperature, nearly all the contaminant compounds are destroyed, and the remaining material is much like charcoal, thus the name of the product, BioChar. What makes this pyrolysis process unique is the high temperatures are achieved in the absence of oxygen, and the gases that are produced by thermal oxidation in the reactor are combusted and destroyed, so no harmful emissions are released to the atmosphere. Pyrolysis requires much less natural gas to operate than thermal dryers, only requiring a small amount to jumpstart the process, after which it can be thermally self-sustaining. And other harmful contaminants like PFOS, microplastic and pharmaceuticals are all destroyed. The capital costs for these options are comparable, but the differences in natural gas consumption, environmental impacts and end uses for BioSolids all favor pyrolysis. This slide shows what our BioSolids look like now on the left versus what BioChar looks like. The picture on the left is about 15% BioSolids and 85% water, while the BioChar on the right is about 95% solids and 5% water. And it looks, feels and smells like ground up charcoal. One of the more exciting things about this process is we'll be able to sell the BioChar rather than pay someone to get rid of it for us. The company that manufactures the equipment we've selected is BioForce Tech. They're located in San Francisco and are expanding installations across the U.S. and Europe. In addition to the traditional market for soil amendments and fertilizer, the market for BioChar is still developing, but already includes things like paint, printer ink, 3D printer filament and concrete. And BioForce Tech is playing a key role in developing this market. The concrete floor in this picture is made with BioChar. When BioChar is used in concrete, it neutralizes the carbon footprint by permanently sequestering the carbon in the concrete, which aligns with our strategic goal of combating climate change through organics management. You'll start to see this used more frequently in new construction as a means to obtain LEED certification. BioChar is also being used more and more in the textile and clothing market, and rumor has it, the limited edition jacket shown here with the 75th anniversary logo is almost sold out. It's going to be hard to get. This slide is a picture of a BioForce Tech pyrolysis system installation in the Bay Area. It's about half the size of the facility we would need, but it will look very similar to this. And you'll notice tonight, the contract before you was with Misco Water and not BioForce Tech. Because of the high cost of this project, Misco Water is providing the bonding capacity while BioForce Tech will manufacture and supply the equipment. This arrangement allows us to have a performance bond that covers the entire value of the project, and this protection would not be available if we contracted directly with BioForce Tech. So to summarize again, staff's request is that you approve the execution of this contract with Misco Water, purchase the BioSolids dryer and pyrolysis system, amend the wastewater treatment plant CIP to increase the funding for the overall project, and to amend the 2022-23 operating budget to allow for the associated funding transfers. And with that, I'll take any questions, and we have representatives from Misco and BioForce Tech with us tonight, who will also be able to answer any questions you may have.
Councilmember Mendoza?
I do have some questions. So in 1920, in 19 to 20, this project was $66 million. Then from 20 to 21, it went up to $70 million. Then in 22 to 23, went to $83 million, and now we're like over $90 million, and it's a lot of money. So how, and I know you said it's not coming from the general fund, but I, what is the impact to residents? How are we paying it? Over how many years? It's just, I'm worried about the financials from, you know, to our residents is the biggest thing I'm concerned about. So what are they going to see?
Sure. Good question. So we have been collecting money through the previous rate study well ahead of time. We've built up a significant cash reserve because we anticipated this project going many years before now. So we have a very large pool of money that's already collected. It's cash sitting in the bank, so.
How much is that in that fund right now?
About $30 million.
Okay. So then, what is the impact to like, to the customer on their rates?
Working through that right now, but the rate study model that we're looking at now does not look like it's going to be much of an increase at all, possibly less than 3%.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Vice Mayor?
You were just about to talk. So this is another legislative mandate without the funding to support it. Is that correct?
That is correct. It's the same legislative mandate that affects the organics on the solid waste side.
Okay. You were talking about the, I believe the BioChar is not being appropriate to use on an organic farming? Is that what you were referring to?
BioChar may be different. BioSolids as a whole are not allowed to be used on organic farms. It's a quirk in the legislation that even though the state encourages you to use it as fertilizer, they won't let you label your food crop as organic if you do so.
So is there any kind of pushback or any new pending legislation to address that considering all the changes in this industry?
There's been lots of pushback. There has not been much success.
That sounds familiar. Okay, I think that's it for me. Thank you.
To piggyback on that, can you sell it to non-organic farms?
Yes.
Okay.
So I do have a question. The 3% increase potential that this has, would the revenue potential offset that at some point?
No, I don't think we have enough volume to make up that kind of revenue, and I don't want to mislead you. That less than 3% is based on our preliminary analysis of the rate study. That rate study will come before you guys and you'll get to scrutinize that, but it, the enterprise is very healthy, and it looks like not much of a rate increase will be needed past the typical inflation.
I know you listed some of the opportunities and to sell. Who would, who would we be marketing this to? And how effective do you think that's going to be? Are we going to be able to sell all of it? And just a comment, that picture of the hands holding that made me very uncomfortable. I hope, just like.
Don't worry, I washed my hands afterwards. Those are my hands. I'm going to let Valentino answer some of the, these questions about the market for it. Valentino's with BioForce Tech. We are going to separately negotiate another contract that will allow them to take charge of all the marketing and disposal of it, and it will result in a cost share with us. So we won't develop that market ourselves. We're going to rely on the people who've already done that for us, so.
Hello, Mayor. Hello, Council. Hello, public. My name is Valentino Villa. I'm with BioForce Corporation. I'm one of the co-founders and the chief training officer. Our business is out in San Francisco, and we've been working with Casey and team for a long time, and we're very excited to be here today, and thank you for your consideration. BioChar, we've been developing the product and market specifically for BioSolids generated products for the past eight years. So the main uses are within concrete, within pigmentation and soil amendment. So as BioForce Tech, we guarantee a 20 years of take for the entire production of the product and no cost to the city of Brentwood. And we're willing to share 10% of the profits for the whole entire length of the contract. So it will be guaranteed that we will be managing. The liability will be on us to be able to sell the product and sharing the revenues back with the city. And again, within concrete pigmentation and soil amendment.
So I do have a question. How do you see the expansion of this market? I know right now, it's currently, you're saying, concrete. How quickly do you think that the market for this is going to expand in other areas? And do you see that happening now?
Yes, that's a great question. I see that growing very rapidly, especially related to carbon credits. You know that now we're on a very big mission to sequester carbon, to prevent carbon, and BioChar will be able to qualify for carbon credits as well. So there's a lot of interest from Europe, North America to sequester carbon and pay money to be able to validate the carbon accounting behind it. So the commodity is $1 value, but the carbon credits are going to be on top of it. So it's just going to be exploding and growing for the next 20, 30 years because we need to all be better about what we're doing, especially around waste.
Okay, thank you. Are there any further questions?
I have a question. Is there a huge maintenance or other costs associated with continuous maintenance of this equipment or?
Not less than any other piece of equipment that may be deployed at wastewater treatment plant. Actually, ours is the most advanced you can find to the marketplace. So definitely need to maintain the equipment, but like you need to maintain your car. So it's semi comparable.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I stop it for one second? That estimated maintenance cost, we currently spend about $600,000 a year in hauling and disposal fees for the BioSolids. That will go away entirely. That will go away entirely and will be offset by roughly $350,000 a year in annual operating costs for the new system. So it will be a cost savings from an O and M standpoint.
And just to piggyback off that question, how are we currently getting rid of the microplastic and pharmaceuticals?
Any microplastics that are in the treatment plant are caught in the bio solids, or they go out in the effluent?
Thank you.
Vice Mayor, and then, oh, okay.
Sorry. The maintenance on the machine, I kinda understand, but lifetime, how long is that machine gonna last us?
So the lifespan is up to 25 years.
And then, just one more question for you. We're spending $600,000 a year in disposal of what we're currently ending up the process with. Where do we get rid of it? And how much is it, and where is it going?
$600,000 includes the trucking, which is the hauling, and the disposal fees at the landfills. We, over the last several years, we've taken it to multiple landfills, Petrelles Hills, Altamont, and Vascal Road. And those depend on the bids that come in every two-year budget cycle. I think our current bio solids costs from a unit perspective are $45 a ton and $600 or $700 a truckload, something like that. And we do about 8,800 tons last year. Okay, thanks. Vice Mayor.
If there are no further clarifying questions of staff, do you have any further presentation for us?
No, that's it, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we'll open public comments.
If you're, and if you'd like to speak in person, please file a speaker card on the form provided at the back counter. If you're participating via Zoom, please raise your hand. Remarks are limited to three minutes per person, and your microphone will be muted after the timer has expired. I received no written public comments regarding this item prior to the 3:00 PM deadline. I do have one in-person speaker card, Danny Dorman.
Excuse me, before I begin, Mr. Mayor, pursuant to policy 110-1, 5.2, decorum generally public, I'm entitled up to five minutes. And so I respectfully ask if I can get that, the two minutes that I did not get the first time.
Currently, the mayor and the council has the opportunity to set those time limits currently. To be fair to all the speakers at this point, the three minutes will be uniform. We can consider at some point in the future, bring the five minutes back.
Okay, that, and that's fine, but to be fair, it is in our charter. So I don't know if it's so much bringing it back as it is letting us use it. So, fair enough. The only comment I have with respect to what was spoken of tonight was I didn't really hear a clear answer as to why there's such an uptick in the cost and what prevents that uptick to continue. When I read the document, it did not show, or showed staff said, "We're not gonna go with this one," but really didn't explain how they came to that conclusion, and I didn't really hear it here. I may be wrong, but I don't believe I heard it here. So at the very least, I hope that you'll reconsider or at least go deeper into staff's recommendation. And lastly, and this is why I was asking, I want on the record that I didn't appreciate what Councilmember Pearson's husband relayed to me because I didn't take a coffee with him. So, thank you.
Thank you. I have no additional speaker cards in person. I do have one hand raised in Zoom. I'll call on Marisol Valles. Marisol, go ahead.
Thank you. I wish there was public comment after council members give their informational, but since there's not, apologies, but I feel like I need to say this now, which has nothing to do with this item. Tony, if you think every training is valuable and you learned something, even if it's a small nugget, maybe next time you can tell us what that small nugget was that you learned. You don't seem to have trouble using resident tax dollars and valuable city staff for an absolutely worthless meeting, so please tell us what you learned next time. Also, if you wanna learn wherever possible to help do your job, how about you not spend resident tax dollars and watch the free, it's all free, city council and planning commission meetings from the last three to five years? So you can learn for free. Thank you.
I have one additional hand raised, Michael Pearson. Mr. Pearson, go ahead.
I'd like to issue my support to staff's recommendation for this item, and I'd like to address Mr. Dorman. He just, again, mentioned me, as he's been doing all over social media. He has been accusing me of having some collusion with Shea Builders because he went onto my LinkedIn account, and out of all the almost 200 endorsements I have, he found one endorsement from a representative of Shea Mortgage, a person who I connected with, who accepted their, I connected, accepted their connect. I don't know, I've never spoken to, never shared an email, never exchanged anything. But Mr. Dorman is running around social media saying that I'm affiliated with some builder. I don't even know any builders, except for the builder who built my house, my home. And I don't even know them, except for the sales rep. I offered Mr. Dorman to meet for coffee to talk about, he, all these questions when he was slamming his hand down at the last meeting and slamming doors on his way out as he was saying how Ms. Pearson must disclose her relationship with builders. That's solely based on him going into a couple hundred of my endorsements on social media for someone I don't even know or have no relationship with at all. And I wanted to meet with him, he didn't want to do that. So I just informed him, if he's gonna be in, if he's gonna be out here slandering my name, defaming my name, making connections, and putting multiple posts, there are so many posts about me on social media, like he's obsessed with me, that I'm gonna stand up for myself, and I'm gonna actually, I'm gonna defend myself to every legal remedy that's available. So if he wants to pursue that, he's more than welcome to slander my name if he wants to. So again, I'm sorry that I've even taken the city council's time for this, and I wish that some of these people who are spending city council's time on things that's not related to the agenda items, unfortunately, I just had to do it, but I really want to make the point that people who are wasting the city council's time, you're not really, you don't love the city like you claim you do. You should let the city council do their job. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no additional hands raised.
Okay, at this time, we will close public comments, move into council discussion. Who would like to start off the council discussion on this item?
I don't think any of us like unfunded mandates. That's all I'm gonna say. I think none of us, I mean, you have a great company, but none of us want to have to spend, you know, so much money on this, but we have to. If you don't like the rules, call your legislators, because they're the ones making them. But yeah, that's my only comment.
Can I ask about the, what Mr. Dorman's question about, can you go over a little bit more about what's the uptick in cost? What causes that? And are we going to expect that in the coming years, that incremental rising cost?
Sure. It's no different than the cost of eggs in the grocery store. Over the last number of years, inflation's been 8% or 9% or whatever it is, but particularly during COVID, when the supply chain got disrupted, we got behind folks like Amazon, who buy 20,000 of the things that we need for this treatment plant, we're at the bottom of the list. So being at the bottom of that list means it's gonna take you an extra year, which means you have to pay for the contractor and the engineer and the construction management team to be on-site to manage your project, even though you're gonna be waiting a year for that particular thing. So it's not just raw materials and costs, it's time and delays. As far as what can we continue to expect, I, well, I wish, I'd go play the stock market, but I really can't answer that.
Thank you.
Councilperson Pearson?
You know, I agree with my colleagues. I think they ask phenomenal questions on this subject matter. One of my concerns is, our hands are tied. I am wondering at some point, I am really concerned with whether or not citizens will eat some of the costs, and I appreciate that 3% is very minimal. Is there at some point, for example, 25 years is not a long time, it sounds like it is? If the rate goes up, will we cap it? Will we stop at some point? Or that 3%, will it ever, you think it skyrocket and exceed or for maintenance?
The question of will that 3% ever go up or down is probably better precarious, but I can tell you that we do build into the rate study replacement funds for every asset that we have, and that includes the treatment plant. So built into that rate are the funds to replace those pieces of equipment in 25 years when they need it.
Thank you.
Casey, I do have a question, and since we do have the representative from the company that is creating this market, which is, I think we're very fortunate to have that. I do have a question, and this is simply because to be willing to profit share 10% is generous in the beginning, how many other sources of this BioChar are there going to be? And as, as the need for it and the desire for it, the market grows, and the product itself becomes less available because limited production from cities and companies, would that 10% be able to be increased in, how long is the contract? Is there negotiating room in that contract as the cost of the raw materials is going to hopefully escalate because of supply and demand principles? Are we able to share in that as well? I know this is early and maybe a little uncomfortable, but I think it's a fair question.
Sure. So we have not started negotiating that contract yet, pending your approval tonight. But once we do have the purchase of this equipment in place, we will begin negotiating that contract, and it's certainly up to us to set whatever terms we're, you know, comfortable agreeing to. It could be 10% now for the first term, and if we decide that this is something that we could market on our own down the road in future contracts, we could either negotiate a higher contract, or we could longer do it our own. I will also mention that we will make more of this BioChar once we do the organics project with the solid waste, because we will be able to take that organic material and also process it through these pyrolysis machines to increase the volume that we will make. So that 10% is the market increases, that 10% is worth more in future years than it is today, plus our volume will go up. So I would imagine our revenue will continue to increase over time.
So another question, I know it's, I don't want to belabor this, but is the contract going to eliminate all but one company? Or is this at some point going to be accessible to local residential companies that might have concrete work that'd be able to incorporate this as well?
That's a good question. I don't think we've got into the details of what that contract to market and sell that material will be, so I don't know that yet. I would imagine we have some room to negotiate that if we would like. I know we've been given assurances that we can use some internally if we would like. It's certainly a good marketing tool. We could put on some of the parks or the ballfields or landscape meetings, we can use it as fertilizer for our existing needs.
Thank you. Yes, I, I'm, I'm, thank you. Yes, our city, Assistant City Attorney is, is looking at me with the, get to stick to the actual item. I will say, as long as none of council has to be in the marketing photos actually holding it in their hand, that, you know, that would even be better.
We could always have the person who photoshopped Mickey onto that guy wearing the shirt, Photoshop our hands in there.
Good job. Well, if there is no further discussion regarding this item, do I have a motion on this item?
I'll make the motion to adopt the request by staff. And I'll, let me pull up the item. To approve the contract documents and authorize the city manager or does need to execute an agreement with TW Associates LLC DBA as Misco Water LLC and all necessary documents, amend the 2022-23 through 2026-27 CIP to include the updated wastewater treatment plan extension phase two, project sheet in the amount of $93,635, and to amend the 2022-2023 operating budget to allow for the associated funding transfers.
Okay, we have a first.
Second.
We have a second, all in favor, aye?
Very quick.
Yes.
Just to make sure, we're amending the project sheet in the amount of $93,635,000. Is that what the maker of the motion intended?
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Amendment, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. And does the secondor agree with that? Thank you so much.
Okay, so we have a first and a second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, it is unanimous, it passes. We'll move on to item D2. This item is a review of the comments received from the California Department of Housing and Community Development on the city's draft housing element and related requests for council direction. Now it turns to staff.
Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council. I will be introducing this item tonight and giving a little background, and then Jennifer will discuss HCD comments and possible revisions to Section 4 of the housing element. So I'll give her a second to call up the presentation.
If you could please share my screen.
Okay, thank you. Next slide, please. Okay, so the purpose of tonight's meeting is for staff to provide an update on the comments we have received on our draft housing element from the state Housing and Community Development Department, otherwise known as HCD, and for council to consider those proposed revisions to the policies and programs in Section 4 specifically that were made in response to that common letter. The red lines to Section 4 were provided as attachment 3 to your staff report. Staff is requesting that the council provide direction on whether those draft changes shown in the attachments are acceptable. Revisions to other sections are scheduled to be brought to the city council for consideration on March 14th. Next slide. So just for a little background, the housing element update has been going on for about a year now. The city conducted multiple workshops and public outreach events in calendar year 2022, which culminated, sorry, in the draft housing element being submitted to HCD in October. We received HCD's comment letter a full 90 days later on January 13th. Next slide. The draft housing element has four main sections and four appendices. Tonight, we provided proposed revisions to Section 4 only to the city council for review. This is the section that contains the city's programs, policies, and actions to implement the housing element, and the section receiving the bulk of the substantive comments from HCD. We would like council's direction on those proposed revisions so we can finalize this section and bring the entire housing element back to council for consideration on March 14th. Next slide. The housing element update is on an extremely aggressive schedule. The statutory deadline for HCD approval passed on January 31st. However, all but two cities in the nine-county Bay Area still do not have an approved housing element at this time. Staff has developed a schedule that moves forward as quickly as possible, given that planning commission review is required prior to city council review, and there are multiple posting and noticing requirements that we must comply with. While tonight's revisions are all within Section 4, staff is also working on revising the entire housing element in response to HCD's comments. This entire housing element will be brought, sorry, will be brought to planning commission, then the city council, and there will be an opportunity to review all of the revisions in track changes format. Because the statutory deadline has passed, staff will be recommending that the city council move forward with adoption of the housing element before HCD approval. Given the scheduling constraints, the earliest the full revised housing element can be brought to city council for review and adoption is March 14th. Staff does not recommend extending the schedule any further due to the risk of, potential risk of potential negative repercussions. I'm sorry, mush mouth, sorry. I'm sorry, mush mouth, sorry. Thank you. These repercussions include possible submittal of builders remedy applications, possible HCD enforcement actions, and lawsuits from third parties. Of these, the builders remedy applications and lawsuits from third parties are the most likely to affect the city if it does not have an adopted housing element. While state enforcement actions are possible, they are not likely if the city is diligently working with HCD and actively working towards finalizing the housing element. So that concludes my portion of the presentation. I will turn it over to Jennifer to discuss the HCD comments and the draft provisions to Section 4. Thank you.
Thank you, Alexis. So as noted, the city received HCD comments on January 13th. The letter included 40 main comments and 21 subsidiary comments categorized based on various topics and sections of the draft housing element. Staff categorized these comments into two categories into minor and major. Minor comments are those that do not require any policies or programs, and can be addressed through additional documentation or minor revisions or clarifications. Major comments are those that will require new or substantially revised programs. Overall, 47 of the comments were classified as minor, while the remaining 15 comments were classified as major. Minor comments preliminarily affect portions of Section 1 or community profile, Section 3 are housing constraints, resources, and fair housing section, and Appendix B are candidate sites analysis. Staff is working on these revisions, which typically include providing additional background information or clarification to HCD. The major comments were related to the goals, policies, objectives, and actions, whereas are all contained in Section 4. An initial draft of this section was completed and provided as part of the agenda report tonight. As part of HCD's initial comments, they did not provide comments on any specific site within our proposed inventory, or indicate opposition of any proposed strategies, assumptions, or methodology. They did, however, request additional documentation and clarification on multiple areas. Since they have only requested additional documentation in these areas, staff has categorized all of these comments as minor at this time. Specific areas in which staff is working on providing additional documentation include our non-vacant sites, and whether the existing uses, primarily single-family homes, will cause constraints to development, our larger sites, which are over 10 acres, and if there's recent trends of development on sites of this size, our realistic capacity assumptions, including the midpoint assumption, our assumed buildable acreage of each site, and whether there are any environmental constraints, and whether infrastructure is available to all sites. In addition, they've also requested documentation on our assumptions that our mixed-use sites will be developed at 100% residential development. In addition, HCD has requested clarification on our past ADU production, and whether our estimated ADU projections over the next planning period reflect past performances. Many of these comments are boilerplate-type comments that we have seen across the Bay Area. Staff is diligently working on providing responses to each and every one of these comments, and believes that with additional background and documentation that our site inventory will be accepted. As staff, as stated, staff is presenting you tonight the proposed changes that are directly related to city policies, in which we are asking for confirmation or direction on. The next few slides, I'll be briefly going over the proposed changes, which are included in red lines in Attachment 3. Staff and our consultant have developed these proposed revisions to address HCD's underlying policy concerns. The first, as part of the agenda packet, is Comment 19. This comment calls out the discrepancies between the city's reported annual progress report for accessory dwelling units for the years 2019 to 2021, and also requests that stronger commitment to implement additional actions if future ADU production is not met. Staff is working on clarifying the discrepancies, however, based on the city's ADU production in 2022, which was less than anticipated. Staff is in need to revise our four-year average from the originally projected 15 dwelling units, or 15 accessory dwelling units per year to 14. In addition, staff is proposing revisions to the accessory dwelling unit programs here to provide additional monitoring and specified actions if the projections are not met. The next is Comment 20. This comment requests additional documentation to determine whether the housing element identifies sites that were used in the previous planning period. Staff is reviewing the requirements of the government code, and is requesting additional clarification to determine if we have any sites that qualify under this section. Staff is recommending adding a program that would allow development of qualifying sites per the government code if it is determined that any do qualify. Comments 24A, B, and C is next. These comments request additional documentation to demonstrate the city's regulations and development standards for emergency shelters by right permanent supporting housing, and ADUs are not a constraint on development of such uses. The city has recently completed updating our ADU ordinance, so changes are not required to this item. However, staff is proposing to add new items, new programs to amend the emergency shelter regulations, as well as the supportive housing regulations. Both of these items have been identified to be part of our zoning code update related to compliance with recent state laws. Comment 25 addresses additional documentation on the city's midpoint policy, specifically reviewing whether it is a potential constraint on achieving maximum densities, costs, and feasibility in supply of housing. Staff is preparing documentation that will demonstrate that the city has approved projects recently that are above the midpoint, and that we do not believe that it is currently a constraint. However, we are proposing to include the revised program, committing to continually review the policy to adopt amendments within one year if policies are ever determined to be a constraint. The next is Comment 26A and B. These comments are related to our city's processing and approval procedures, and the impact that they may have on housing cost, supply, timing, and approval certainty. In order to provide greater certainty in development process, staff is proposing to adopt new objective design standards, which was recently included in the updated scope for the zoning code update, to eliminate all criteria related to good design for projects. And lastly, we have comments 27A, B, and C. These comments request review of the city's regulations on reasonable accommodation requests, our current definition of a family, and residential care facilities of seven or more individuals, to determine that the development standards are not constraint on development of such uses. Staff has already identified the reasonable accommodation regulations and residential care facility regulations to be updated as part of the city zoning code update that is required by state law on housing element. Staff is proposing to add programs to update these two sections, and to review the current definition of a family, and an update if deemed to be a constraint. Again, we would like to reiterate that we are concurrently working on updating the entire housing element, which will be brought back for adoption once complete. Some of the additional areas that we are currently working on, including additional documentation, is local development patterns, providing additional documentation on extremely low-income housing, providing additional documentation to support the current realistic capacity assumptions, providing additional documentation on our governmental constraints on the development of housing, and updating our site inventory with the adopted PA1 sites, and modifying our ADU assumptions, which was decreased by one per year based on the production average. We are working on providing responses to each and every one of HCD's 61 comments, and believes that with the additional background and documentation, we will be able to provide an updated housing element that is in full compliance with state law. With that, staff is requesting tonight to city council provide feedback on whether the initial draft changes provided in Attachment 3 are acceptable. Staff would then incorporate that feedback into the revised housing element to be brought back for adoption by council in March. With that, staff is available. I know out of the 61 comments, it is a mouthful. It's a bit complicated, so staff is available to answer any questions or concerns you may have on any of those comments. We also have our consulting team on Zoom, and they are available as well. With that, that concludes staff's report.
Counselwoman Mendoza?
Hi. What's the difference between what we submitted on ADUs for last year versus what we had this year?
So since we submitted our draft housing element in October, we had to go on what we were projecting to be our ADU production. We had projected that we were going to have 18 ADUs issued. At the end of the year, it only ended up that we issued a total of 12. So if you average our four-year, that just, you know, six that we were off this last year shifted our average down one.
I think we have right now 14 under construction, correct?
We only issued, we probably have 14 under construction, but they go off of how many were issued. So as part of our documentation, we are indicating that we issued 12, but I think on January 1st, we still had 17 in plant check.
Okay, so, I mean, maybe if we could talk to them about that to try to up that, because I think 14 are construction and 17 under review, I think we're going to come in higher than that low number. So I don't know. I mean, I don't know what your conversations go like when you meet with them, but maybe showing that will help them raise that amount. I know you're going to come back on March 14th, and three, you know, just a few days is a really quick window. Is there any way, because I want to look at the site to site, like where they're asking, I think it was 20, where you're reviewing the sites. But we need a little bit more time as council to review all of that. Can we get this part of the agenda for March 14th sooner than the Thursday night?
So we will be publishing it for Planning Commission first.
Okay.
And that will be the same, unless Planning Commission asks for changes, it will be the same version that council would see at their meeting. So it will be published, we're still trying to schedule that Planning Commission meeting, a special meeting, so it will be published in advance of the Planning Commission, I mean, sorry, of the city council meeting on the 14th.
Okay. Thank you so much for that, because that will make my life a lot easier, not so stressed out over the weekend. And the last thing, I think shelters had said only the employees can have parking. So what if, I mean, there are homeless people that sleep in their cars and might want to go into a shelter overnight. Do they not take that into consideration? That's so sad.
So the trend in a lot of the new housing laws is to reduce or eliminate parking requirements, and find ways to do that in terms of proximity to transit, or, you know, we've talked about this in the, in other contexts, and this new state law is just limiting it to employees.
Okay. You're going to work on the midpoint. When you, I know we were talking about the midpoint, but one of the things that we, you know, we just had a project with the density bonus. I think that by using the midpoint, and then being able to build to the max, is actually encouragement for low, very low, and moderately low-income housing. So I think that, I don't know if that's a discussion point you use. Is that something that you, I don't know if you've talked to them about that.
So right now, as part of our draft that we're working on, is we are including specific project examples. You know, the most recent one is Orchard Grove. Orchard Grove was 101% of the capacity for that zone. They had the density bonus, so they did come in above the allowable density. So that is one of the examples we are using to show that we are increasing our density. We have approved projects above the midpoint, and doing so, we're getting more affordable units. So that is part of the kind of overall story we are trying to tell to HCD as part of our revisions.
Okay, that's it for right now. Thank you.
Any further questions, staff?
Thank you. The report was talking about the benchmark of other cities' trends, since some of our trends were not allowable. Can you talk a little bit about what those look like, and why only are neighboring cities and not necessarily cities that were comparable to us in other areas of the state?
So we are actually using both set of examples. HCD and their comment letters specifically named, you know, the city of Antioch and Oakley. So we do have specific examples of those. I know one off the top of my head is the city of Antioch, recently approved on a larger site. So it's part of our analysis of sites being over 10 acres. I believe it was a 15-acre site built at 100% capacity, and it was 100% affordable. And so we're using that as an example of a regional trend. We also have some from Oakley. And then also we have a county collaborative that has provided documentation for all of county projects. So we're including a lot of those as well. So not just our direct neighboring cities, but counties throughout the, or projects throughout the county.
And they're allowing for that?
Yeah.
Something. And then in talking about the reuse of previously allocated sites, and you mentioned something about finding out if they qualify, how will, how will that work?
So we're trying to get clarification on some of the requirements. It's things like sites from PA1, they were included in our last site, but because we did a comprehensive update, although it is still the same specific plan, the fundamental base of it has substantially changed. And so it is our stance that those do not count and would not qualify. And so we need to have some discussions with HCD that we're trying to get in order to make that determination. But we didn't want to say that we don't have any sites. It's something that we still are looking into, and so we do need to add the program in case HCD does say that we have sites that do qualify. We would be required to have those by right. But right now, we're still doing that analysis, and still need to have additional conversations with HCD.
So there's some ambiguity in how that law is applied, and so our position and the story will tell is that we are not necessarily reusing sites in the way that the law defines that compels us to have this 20% affordable requirement, and all the other reuse of sites requirements under that law. So we need to have that discussion with HCD, because it's not clear that these sites do meet that criteria. So we've put in a policy that gives us some flexibility. We're not committing to doing something that we don't necessarily have to do.
Okay, thank you. There was a mention of one of the, we could have an eligibility for various funds. I've caught your little mouth thing. And I'm wondering what, what those funds would be. If, if we actually end up qualifying for them, what would they help us with? What would they come from?
So there's multiple, so you're speaking if we do not have an adopted housing element, that we would not potentially receive certain grant funds?
Right, those ones, yeah.
Yeah. And if you have that slide, Jennifer, of the repercussion slide, you can show there's a list. So there's different grants that can be applied to affordable housing that you can use for a number of things. There's planning grants, there's grants to actually help do gap financing and funding of affordable housing, this construction. The city doesn't have any of those to date. We haven't applied. We don't receive any of those funds. But if we were interested in those funds in some point in the next eight years, and we do not have an adopted housing element, we would not be eligible to receive them.
Those would be more for standalone than inclusionary, is that correct?
Correct. So those would be separate projects. So the inclusionary units are part of our ordinance and are built by the developers and the project proponents. These would be standalone, different types of affordable projects.
Okay. Can you talk a little bit about how much our, the adoption of design standards, the change of that, would protect us? Would it protect us against, basically?
So objective design standards, which we discussed briefly on the, in the context of the zoning ordinance update a couple weeks ago, they protect us from just being able to apply only the straight objective standards in our code today, which don't deal with aesthetics necessarily. They're dealing with lot size, building height. So if our design guidelines are subjective, we can't apply those to projects going forward. So the objective standards help protect the look and the feel and everything that people love about Brentwood, and allow us to apply those to projects. Without those, it's fair game for developers to propose projects, and we have basically no ability to put aesthetic requirements on them.
Thank you for that. And I think my last question was, if you could talk a little bit about the process. You mentioned the 90-day window, and how the response only came on the 90th day. Could you talk a little bit about how that process has gotten us to the point where we're trying to fresh as much as we are?
Yeah, so in the middle of last year, they passed AB1, or 215. It was at the very beginning of when all of Northern California was adopting, or starting to initialize all of our housing elements. That added additional timing, which originally, the initial review was 60 days, and that allowed HCD to have now 90 days. It also included some additional provisions that required all drafts to be published for seven days before HCD's submittal. And these were things that were, just came about, I believe it was early 2022. And so when we initially started our timeline for this whole entire process, those weren't really baked into our schedule. So those were things that, you know, we started on one schedule, and we kind of found out and had to rework everything early in 2022 to add some of those new bill provisions that required additional timing for HCD review from the 60 to the 90 day. And I believe it also extended the second review. It used to be 30 days, and now the second review is 60 days.
Great. That's it. That's what I've got for now. Thank you.
Are there any further clarifying questions, staff?
I have one. 4K, the emergency shelters, we're only dealing with the parking spaces to satisfy AB139. What is our timeline as to satisfying AB2339?
So right now, the way and our understanding of twenty-three, twenty-three thirty-nine is that if we submit an additional draft after April first of this year, then we would need to abide by AB twenty-three thirty-nine. Our second draft will be submitted before that. So we are trying our hardest to make sure everything is complete. But if for any reason HCD kicks back that second draft and provides additional comments, then our third draft would be submitted after the April first date. If that does happen, then we most likely will have to add an additional program that requires us to update our code in accordance with AB twenty-three thirty-nine. But we won't know that until we get response from our second draft.
And, and just to clarify, how much funding is the state giving the city to accommodate those requirements?
That would be zero.
Thank you. If there are no further clarifying questions of staff, we will open public comments.
If you're in person, please file a speaker card on the form provided at the back of the chambers. If you're participating via Zoom, please raise your hand. Remarks are limited to three minutes per person and your microphone will be muted after the timer has expired. One written comment was received from Bobby Jurisich regarding the importance of following the general plan and updating the housing element. And that was submitted prior to the three P M deadline and has been posted on the city's website. And I have no speaker cards and there are no hands raised in Zoom.
Thank you. At this time, we will close.
Oh, wait, I do now have one.
We will reopen public comments.
I'll call on Carolina Villaseca. Carolina, go ahead.
Hi, thank you. And this may be just me reading the documentation and not being as familiar with it as other city council members are. But there were several comments made about changing programs to the city. When this happens, are these programs going to come back and the changes detailed out, including scope and cost? Because there was at least three that I counted as, as, as the presentation was made. And I know this is very complex, but I'm just, I'm just curious about these. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no additional hands raised.
Okay, we will close public comments. And staff, if you could address that question.
So many of the programs that we, we are adding tonight, including update our zoning code, our municipal code in accordance with state law, that is something that we were anticipating having to do. And so a lot of that is baked into our zoning code update. So a lot of those will be coming back with final budgetary, you know, review. But we do believe, as we presented, I believe it was the last meeting, that it can be covered under our existing CIP program for our zoning code update for the majority of those programs. A lot of the other programs are actually things that are currently done by staff, our housing staff and, and the planning staff that are part of our day-to-day operation. You know, contacting affordable housing developers, providing assistance for first-time homebuyer programs. These are things that, that are already being done that we're indicating that we're going to continue. So a lot of these things aren't necessarily additional costing items, they're part of our city projects and, and city staffing. I don't believe there's any other ones that will cost additional funding that is outside of our current budget scope. Part of our housing element consultant scope as well will be to, after the adoption of the housing element, to have them assist us in some of these code updates as well. So they can assist in, in helping us maneuver all of these items that we will have to continue to do for the next eight years. So they can provide us assistance in, in what we need to do to be able to be successful in following forward with all these programs.
Thank you. I, I'll start off our council discussion. We all understand how frustrating this is. And having, having no say in, in the mandates that are coming down from the state, we are certainly not unique as a city in this situation. And we are fortunate to have the staff that we do, that, that is very experienced in trying to navigate the complications up until this point and quick learners to find, you know, to pivot for things that are unexpected. You know, this is something that we have to do and we have to do as, as fast as we can to, to keep ourselves as safe as we can for as long as we can. And I just want to thank you, Jennifer. I know that you have been chained to your desk and Alexis has been standing over you with a ruler, just making sure you were behaving. Thank you. The, the amount of hours and extra work and dedication you've done for this is mind-boggling and I only know a little bit about it. So thank you so much for the work that you're doing on this. And, and I appreciate everything that our staff is doing and you're doing. Thank you. Any further?
Yeah, it's a lot of work. It's a lot. I mean, I'm on calls, I'm probably on three to four calls about housing a week and a lot of them are planners and it's a lot. And I'm sorry, this is what you got to work on, but it's being mandated. Our, all of our residents need to know that this is not something we want to do, like you said. There's only one way to fix it and that is a constitutional amendment. So we'll see if that happens in two thousand and twenty-four. But for, and I'm, for Newsom and the legislators to be planning from their ivory tower is not the right thing. We want to do the right thing and create affordable housing. I mean, we've been fighting for that for years. I think that instead of doing this, they should do a statewide mandate where all new developments have to have a percentage of affordable housing all across the state like they're doing in Europe. You don't have short-term rentals. All across the state, you have vacancy rules because those items are what's taking the inventory off the market and driving the price up. So if residents are upset at this, then we need to do something about it because as long as we keep voting the way we're voting, this is what's going to happen. And if you think this is the end, this is not the end. There is more bills coming. Weiner just proposed another one yesterday. So this is not the end. This will continue every single year with more and more bills that we are going to have to follow. And your parking will go away. You're, you know, you're going to have two-story ADUs in, you know, in your neighbor's house. So it's sad that we have to do it because I think we all want to do the right thing in the right way for our city and we're not allowed to do that.
I think about things like the, the shelter and the parking for that and, and the women's shelter we have in town. And the people that are there are at their very most vulnerable in their lives and yet we're telling them they can't leave the place because they can't have a car, can't take their kids to school, they can't go to work, they can't take their kids to a movie. Nope, you're stuck, you can't drive because there's no place to park your car. Blows my mind. And it blows my mind, we were talking about part of here, they were looking at, where is it? It was a really good note. I'm not going to find it. They were asking about commute and, and that kind of a quality of life issue. And then, so our, what, I think eighty percent of our residents are, are commuting at least forty-five minutes each way. So they're asking a question about that on one end. And on the other end, they're talking about trying to force commercial development into rezoning into residential, which is just going to make the problem worse. So it, everything is just such a, it's just, it's mind-blowing, truly. So, and I do, I thank you for all the work on this too. And it was not fun to read through and it is not fun to vote on this by any means. But we do understand the position that you're in and the one that we're in. Thanks.
If there's no further discussion, do I have a motion on this item?
As detailed in the staff report, I move to direct staff to make the proposed revisions to the second draft housing element.
Have a first?
A second.
A second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous, it passes. Item D three, this item is a resolution regarding the revised strategic plan for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three through twenty-three, twenty-four, as it pertains to the youth center. And I'll turn it to staff.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. At your last regular meeting on January twenty-fourth, you just received an update on all the strategic plan initiatives as well as updates on each one. And we're also invited to look at those and make sure those are still your top priorities. There was one in particular that you recommended making changes to, and that was related to focus area five in Parks and Recreation. And it previously stated pursue measure X funding to renovate the C D building for a youth center. In the discussion, you discussed that there could be other facilities that should be considered, especially to be increasingly competitive for those measure X funds that the county is assessing viability for and feasibility this summer. And so recommended striking the statement of renovate C D building. So that draft is provided for you in the redlined version. However, I've recommended in the staff report an additional, perhaps revision you'd like to consider, and that is that if we do not receive measure X funding, whether or not you'd like us to consider still pursuing a facility or other funding to find a youth center here in Brentwood. So you could either approve your redline as you have drafted and we have a resolution to that effect, or if you'd like to expand and create a broader scope so we look at all potential funding sources and all potential facilities that could be out there and come back to you with any analysis on that, we would entertain that as well. And that's the report for you tonight.
Okay. Are there any clarifying questions of staff regarding this item? Okay, if not, we will open public comment.
If you're in person, please file a speaker card with the form provided on the counter at the back of the chambers. If you're participating via Zoom, please raise your hand. Remarks are limited to three minutes per person and your microphone will be muted after the timer has expired. And no written comments were submitted on this item prior to the three P M deadline. And I have no speaker cards and there's no hands raised in Zoom.
Okay, we'll close public comment, move into council discussion.
I think this was something I proposed when we were looking at the strategic plan about removing certain items. And I absolutely think we need to expand our redline item. I think looking for other sources of funding, but not eliminating the actual potential source of funding that we have right now would be in our best, in our, in our best interest. So I really, really hope we can get a youth center. So whatever it takes to expand those opportunities, I'm all for it.
I, I'm not in agreement right now with expanding other sources. We actually have agreements with our schools where we're supposed to be able to use their facilities. So we actually talked about it at the soccer meeting. We talked about when it was originally the greens were made, they were made to be kind of like small satellite youth centers. So I think that we have a resource available. So I think we should pursue that. I don't want to expand any language right now until we figure out why we're not exercising those agreements to their fullest because that would be not as expensive at all. And actually, there was a woman there that teaches tennis and she was all about it. Like, you know, so, you know, she's familiar with the agreements and Bruce and I spoke about it. So I think we should do, we should look at that, which is low cost.
What about an expanding it to say something to that effect that we need to?
Well, I'm going to make that a future agenda item. I don't want to put it on here. Let's put on an agenda item, explore it. And then we can make, put it on this list when, when we, when that comes back to us. But this, this, I think this list needs more analysis before we say, let's put something additional on this list.
Okay. So what, I'm sorry, the, your proposal, I'm sorry.
My future agenda item?
No, no, no. As, as to today, just if not to expand it, to keep it to what we agreed to at the?
Just the redline.
The redline?
Yeah.
So just to clarify, if that redline is approved tonight, it would just say pursue measure X funding for a youth center, which means if we don't get measure X, then we don't have direction about what kind of facilities or other funding opportunities or joint partnership with the school as an example, we'd have to come back to for more direction at that point.
Yeah, then when we review CIPs again, we can bring that in. If we haven't gotten anywhere with our agreements, then we can bring that in at that point.
Okay. There was some discussion about looking at the senior center capacity, the community center capacity, look at all the different programming that we have and mix and match and see if there's other opportunities. And we're prepared to do some of that analysis and see what the cost benefit would look like, the revenue loss, the revenue gain from mixing and matching and finding the best solutions. So we would prepare to include that in the analysis as well, if, if you, council would like to see that.
Yeah. Have you, when was the last time we talked to the county about it?
Let's see, Bruce and I spoke with them, what, three weeks ago? And they were open to entertaining touring any other facilities that we wanted to show them. We've not yet scheduled that. Would certainly entertain that yet. They haven't started their formal process yet, but.
Yeah, I'm hoping they like, I mean, it's right next to La Paloma, which is our most needy kids. So I really hope, and it's near, you know, Knights Inn and Byron.
And they have toured that building and they liked it in principle, but they're, we're waiting on the full analysis of the assessment to look at the data behind it and see if we're still a viable candidate based on the population and the demographics and the needs.
Thank you.
I, I would like to, to consider what you just recommended.
Is that part of the redline, what you just said? Like you just take out, we're just taking out C D building and putting any other locations, right?
That's my understanding. But I'm always welcome to be corrected.
Well, I mean, we're, we're going to try to implement the intent of the council, but the language, if we strike it out, as made the motion, the last council maybe to just pursue measure X funding. And I was trying to say, let's keep it maybe a little more open-ended, joint partnerships, maybe other funding opportunities. We don't have a lot of discretionary funds, but we would pursue whatever opportunities would exist and make sure we find a good working facility that would qualify for a youth center. If it's a satellite locations, if it's joint partnerships with the school districts, with churches, with any other city properties, finding the best uses and maximizing the capacity of all of our potential facilities.
I, I would like that to, to address that in this motions. That way we don't have to come back for, for that process.
I would agree. And I would say that, that this has been something that's been discussed for so many years and we haven't found the funding and we haven't found the site yet, but we're looking under every rock, trying to figure this out because we all want this to happen. We just need it to be not only something that we can invest in initially, but it's got to be, operationally speaking, something we can sustain over the long term. Otherwise, it ends up closing and that's not going to be any, any good. So there's a lot we have to look at here. Open-ended works, I, I love the idea that we were talking about with the schools because I've heard that too. And the whole idea about after-hours at senior center or the community center, switching some things up. We've got a lot of creative people. I think we can work something out with that. So I'd like to see that open too.
And yeah, in addition to what you just said, instead of striking the C D building completely out, can we just, the C D building plus other facilities? I mean, what, we're, we're ruling out a building that could viably work, may not be the best, but it may be the most economical. So let's, let's leave it in there in case it does end up working out. It's not going to hurt us to leave it in the system.
Yeah, I think the intent of the council was to keep the C D building in play, but to also look at other facilities.
Only.
So it's recommended to strike it, but I'm recommending maybe keep it a little more expansive. All facilities, any financing, whenever we can find it and we'd come back to you for direction on that.
All facilities, including the schools, right?
Schools, churches, privately owned.
Yeah. I, I think that would be good. So we don't have to come back, it's open-ended and we can keep this going instead of it deadening and having to figure it out later.
Yeah. And we previously had a youth center-focused ad hoc committee from the council and that could be something that could be entertained again if we come up with some analysis and have several different scenarios, maybe bring it before an ad hoc committee if, if the council would like and work through some of that and then bring it back to the full council or bring it back to the full council and have you all weigh in on it as well. Or send it to the Parks and Recreation Commission too is another option and have them vet this and then provide a recommendation to the city council. So lots of options.
Do we have a motion?
So as detailed in the staff report, I move to adopt the resolution approving and adopting the revised city of Brentwood strategic plan. Second.
Forgive me. So we have two sets of changes in the staff report and then in the redline.
Just the, this one, the strike through on to renovate C D building, we're taking that out so that any, so that they can look at any location with measure X money right now. And if we don't get the measure X money, then we'll figure out what else is possible. But let's pursue that first, is what I thought we were saying.
So not including the more expansive language that's found on?
No.
Page? Okay, I'm just wanting to make sure I've got the motion down, right? On page four oh five. Okay.
And yes, second agrees.
I'm sorry, I'm not clear on what is the, I thought. The motion was for the expansive. So what is, what exactly are you, can you read what? Pursue measure X funding for a youth center. So I was thinking we pursue measure X first because right now we don't, I mean, it's a pipe dream to think that we have funding. We don't have it right now. So I would like to pursue this full force. And then my agenda item coming forward is going to be this, in the same time doing concurrently the, the agreements with the schools. That, but that's a separate thing. It's not with this one.
Could we not include that in this? Could we not include that in this and accomplish the same thing?
I feel like these things are really slow to come to fruition, and I would like the school one to be a standalone, like, let's try to move that faster if we can. Because I feel like a lot of these on the strategic plan kind of?
They have their own schedule.
Yeah.
Is there a way to?
Yeah, the Measure X, for example, the council gave direction January of 2021 to start working on Measure X funding, and this has been a longer process than I think even the county has considered. They lost some staff at the department who was managing it. They needed to hire some additional resources. In fact, they went out for an R F P and didn't do it correctly, and now have issued a second timer R F P to bring in a project manager to manage that whole Measure X analysis. So it is taking much longer to get even Measure X funding. That's why we're recommending open up a little bit more. Schools could be included in that already. We would certainly entertain all options to find the right source, and that could speed this up. If we just wait on Measure X, this could delay this further.
So my question is, because I agree that we need this as fast as possible, would it be the fastest process for us to include all of that in this motion and just, you know, not hindered by Measure X, but?
Yeah, and we have M O Us already in place to work joint space, and Bruce can elaborate further on that even now, that will look at all other potential facilities for a youth center, including with the school district.
How do we get that to come back as an agenda item so that we all understand the M O Us? Do you have to do a separate agenda item or?
We can either send it to you directly, or we can put it on a future agenda so you can see all those M O Us and what those joint use agreements spell out.
But does, in that case, it does seem like it should be a separate. Because then also then, that public comments will be specific to it.
Correct.
Because there are a lot of people that have been following this process.
Expecting it, school will be expecting it, and they could participate in that as well.
That way they can all partake. I mean, I like the?
No, no, I totally understand. My goal was just to get it happening as fast as possible. So if that's the best way to do it, no objection here.
Okay, so we have a first and a second?
So we do have a first and a second, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed, it does pass. Moving into item D four. This item is regarding City Council Administrative Policy Number 110-1 as it relates to the procedures for the adding of future agenda items by city commissions.
So this staff report is in response to Vice Mayor Meyer's request to ensure that we had the planning commission have a clear understanding and that staff equally had that same understanding of how the future agenda item request procedure would work. We have made sure that staff all understand it, and we want to then follow up with this direction tonight to ensure that not only the planning commission understands it, but all city commissions understand that they can make a future agenda request as long as it's consistent with the responsibilities and scope of that commission as outlined in the municipal code. And so we've presented in the staff report the following ways that you can add it a future agenda item and how we make sure that the public is aware of it through that two-step process. And that would be considered immediately, effective immediately. Further, well, it's not quite clear in the policy if there is a request from a commission with a future agenda item that's outside of the scope of their responsibilities, or if it will involve significant staff resources or time or expenses, we would want to make sure that the commissions understand that we may need to come back to the city council. And some of those requests may need to follow either strategic plan process, C I P process, or an operating budget process to ensure that we have sufficient funds and resources to dedicate to that request. So we would try to be more transparent with the commissions, with the public, about how that would be entertained. So we've outlined in the staff report the following ways that the future agenda items work and also what the commission responsibilities are so they understand. And I understand that there could be some interest in making sure that we put this on an agenda of each commission so they also have the information and that they can follow it, and we would help assist them through that process.
Are there any clarifying questions of staff on this item? Okay, seeing them, we will open public comments.
If you're in person, please file a speaker card on the form provided at the counter at the back of the chambers. If you're participating via Zoom, please raise your hand. Remarks are limited to three minutes per person, and your microphone will be muted after the timer has expired. And no written comments were submitted on this item prior to the deadline this afternoon. And I have no speaker cards, and there are no hands raised.
Okay, we'll close public comments, move into council discussion, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. I brought this up because having watched planning commission meetings regularly, I was seeing that some planning commissioners were bringing things forward without seeing them return as an agenda item. And so in discussing this, sometimes that was happening because it wasn't in the purview of the commission that it was coming to. But it was something like Tim was saying, that it would have to come back to council, whatever. So I want it to be a clearer process for all of the commissions. But I also want, now that we're clarifying this, and it's, you know, in a much more understandable language, I would like to see all of the commissions have this added as an agenda item to their agenda so that they can get a clear understanding moving forward, and also make sure that they're, it's communicated with them when it isn't in their purview, that this is not something that you can, you know, council can address this or whatever, but it's not under the purview of planning or whichever commission we're talking about.
Yes, I think that's a great idea, and that will help educate everybody, including the residents who are paying attention to the commissions, understand the process.
Is there any further discussion? Okay, do I have a motion?
As detailed in the staff report, I move to direct staff to share the council administrative policy 110-1, adding future agenda items policy with all of the commissions, and no additional direction except that I think it should be something that the educational piece is taken care of.
And I'll second that.
We have a first and a second, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous, passes. Moving into item E one. If you have a new agenda request, please raise your hand, I'll call on you in order. Councilmember Mendoza.
Yeah, I know I said I was going to bring agenda items, but I think these are important. People speaking at council meetings, we, right now, I know employees are afraid to come to council meetings. We need a process that makes it safe for them to feel that they can come, and there's no negative ramification. They have also, like any other resident, they should be able to come to speak to us about non-job-related issues. So we, and my understanding is they have to go back to their directors and recap a meeting. If it is not job-related, I want them to feel safe to be able to come and talk to us. So I'd like for that to come, that's one item. We talked about the agreement with the?
Just, you want a policy that would?
I think we need a policy because my understanding is they are afraid to speak. And we talked about the mutual agreement with the schools on using their facilities. I got feedback on tennis and basketball, I don't know what else is available, but those are kind of the big ones, that we don't have outside basketball courts during the summers. It's really, really hot, and the kids want to play. So maybe if we can figure something out on that, that would be great, and the tennis courts. My understanding is that the waitlist for tennis during Park and Rec summer is about 100 kids. And our high schools have tennis courts that they don't use all day long, so maybe we can get some classes scheduled there as well. I know that we're working on a new locking system at Liberty, but I think you said that, so as soon as they get that done, maybe we can, and that will open up stuff for the youth to do, more activities for them, that would be great. I know we talked, and then, and this is kind of like I'm looping back. We had talked about scholarships for Park and Rec, I don't know where we are on that. But if we could get an update on where we are on the scholarships for, you know, and how do we get the information out there? Like, do more kids, how many have we given out the last, like, maybe few years? And how do we get more kids involved that don't have the resources? This one is, I've been thinking about this one after my conversation with the president of the earthquakes. We should probably, we need money, I mean, it's no, we need money. So right now, we have Sunset Fields, and like he said, our soccer fields get more eyeballs on them than their major league soccer field does. So let's see if we can find a way to get sponsors and get money, and we could use that to help fund kids that can't afford club ball or whatever it is, and, you know, for scholarships. I was just trying to find a way to make some money. And then, one thing that used to happen that I haven't seen?
Is that still part of the scholarships, the Sunset Park?
There's two different things, so scholarships, like, where are we on that? And then sponsorship for Sunset, and then that funds we could use for stuff.
Okay, so Sunset Park's the fourth one.
I'm sorry?
Sunset Park's the fourth one, do I have those right?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Sunset Park is the fourth one?
Process, one, two, three, four, yeah.
Okay.
And then the last one is, we need to get back to, developments used to come to L U D and Park and Rec first before they came to planning and to council to review the parks and all of, you know, the whole development. That doesn't seem to be happening, so if we could get back to that process, I know it used to happen, but, and I think you, when you were on L U D, we need, I think we need to get back to that process. Just one more review before it comes to planning and council would be fantastic. And that's it. And so some of those are just, let's start stuff that we used to do, and then some of them are new.
Councilmember Pearson?
I just want to expand on one of Councilmember Mendoza's future request of the mutual agreements with schools. I know you talked about tennis and I think it was basketball?
Basketball.
And I'd like to also just do an agenda item to our mutual agreements specifically with theater. We have the new theater, and we have the right to have usage of the theater. I know that we have a lot of theater groups who may be able to make usage of that through Parks and Rec. And so I'd like to expand on that as well, for our youth programs.
So we'll keep that maybe as that same second agenda request and just add theater to that list of potential uses, if that works.
Anything else, like if there's anything else in the agreement?
They all spell out what is allowed, but we can definitely put that on the agenda.
I also, like, we did several resolutions to celebrate a lot of our diversity in our city. And I like for council to look and see how we can do celebratory events that match with our celebratory resolutions that we came up with. For example, the youth commission did the Lunar New Year, but I'd like to see what other things we can do as a city to do more celebratory events. I think right now, we do the holiday event at the end of the year, the Fourth of July. We did, for example, with our 75th anniversary, but I'd like to see how we can and what the cost to the city would be for us to do more celebratory events.
So we have a policy that outlines when we do those proclamations? Is that where you're looking to maybe review and then add any additional concepts to?
Yes, thank you for clarity.
Okay, are there any further new future agenda item requests?
I just have a quick follow-up. We normally would put these on your next regular agenda, and with, one, two, three, four, five, six, it's going to be an even heavier agenda? Do, are any of these that can wait till maybe March to then even discuss about whether you want to dedicate resources to? Or do you want to see these all on your next regular agendas, as we normally do?
For my two, I'm okay with all of the things that we have to do with our housing element. I'm okay with this being put off onto the agenda at the end of March, since we have the March 14th meeting that will be really heavy.
That will be heavy, so March 28th then?
Yes, please.
Okay, great, thank you.
You don't have to bring L U D and Park and Rec back, right? Like, that just happens, because that's what we do, that's just kind of a reminder, right?
We need to probably discuss what it is that you're exactly looking for to come back and detail time.
Can you just work with staff on what we used to do and just let's do the same thing?
I don't know what that is, so we're gonna have to look at it.
Yeah, but I don't necessarily think that has to come back. I think staff can just start back up what we used to do. I mean, I don't?
Consistent with the policy.
Do you think it needs to come back based on how you used to manage it?
Well, because there's been several different changes instead of just that one, it's probably a good idea for it to come back so we can make sure everything's working exactly like, you know, council's wanting to do.
Okay.
Because there were some change, you know, not just one change, but several.
I'm trying to think of which one I would want to push. I think the employee one is important. But why don't, the employee one, I think, needs to happen fast, I think it's important. And then, I think the L U D and Park and Rec one is important too, because we have some stuff, we have developments coming up, and then maybe push the other ones, I don't know how everyone else feels.
It's your?
I know, but like, we're all going to be working on them.
Sounds like they'll all come back for discussion on February 28th except for the celebratory proclamations, which we'll bring back on March 28th. And I didn't hear the Sunset Park one in your discussion about needing to come back sooner. So that one can also wait till maybe March 14th?
I'm sorry, I have a clogged ear, so I can't hear anything.
I heard that the March 28th, we can wait till have the celebratory proclamations come back, and all the rest would come back on February 28th except for Sunset Park. You said, I didn't hear that that one was?
No, the ones that I would like to come back fast are the employee one and the L U D one in Park and Rec. Those two, if we could push those two to the top, and then the other ones can wait?
Okay.
Thank you.
And because I also found it difficult to hear occasionally, if you turn your microphone off, this has a speaker at the base of it, so if you turn the microphone off, you can hear better. Just new information from new technologies here. If there are no further new agenda item requests, we will move into item E two. And that is Vice Mayor Meyer would like to explain her request.
Thank you. This actually came about in some of the discussions we've had around history and around what is happening now and what led up to this point. And so my original thought was to have hyperlinks to previous meetings in the agenda. But I also want to make sure that we're not causing this to push out the agenda timing. I mean, I know, like, Thursday is a kind of a hard stop for us. Like, we need it to come on Thursday when some of them are so long that we need the whole entire weekend to go through them. So I want to just double-check, like, before I go any further, how much would that add to the workload? There are times when I think that it could be just one meeting that was linked, but on some of these more complicated projects, developments, processes, policies, there might need to be more than one. So with all of those things in mind, maybe just get an idea of what you think would, what it would do to the workload and what potentially could impact the Thursday release of the agenda.
Great, thank you for asking. So our executive team talked about this extensively and also talked about this briefly with the city clerk's office. We think it could take anywhere from five to 10 minutes per previous action to go look it up, find the video, and link it, so not a significant amount of time. If there's an agenda report that has anywhere from five to 10 previous actions, that obviously would take longer. We have some other things like, some of the, Cal Ranch recently came back, had probably 20 previous actions because of all the durations over all the years, including all the different planning commission iterations. That one would take substantially more time to link all those hyperlinks to every meeting. We also have our agenda management system that we're preparing to transition to a new one starting this summer. So any hyperlinks that we do include in this old one will no longer be valid, as far as I understand, will no longer work. And so we would be starting those in the new system, and we assume there's a similar capability to do those hyperlinks in future agenda items. So it will require a little more staff time. I don't anticipate at this point that it would delay the publication from Thursdays, which we hit 95% of the time. I suppose occasionally a staff report might be late if it has extensive links to include. I do worry, though, if we send out, publish an agenda with 25 links to old videos that I'm not sure anybody's going to even look at them all, right? But again, if that's what the council would like to do, we would certainly find and make the time to do so.
This is definitely not my intention to have 25 links. My thought was like a top three or something like that. But is there any other kind of a process that you can think of that would make it just slightly easier for residents to find what they're looking for? Either new system or old system, I mean, if it's something that needs to wait, because the new system might be more, you know, amenable to that?
We could include just the general link, that if they just find the right date and the right meeting, they could get to it quicker than just no link at all, and that would be very easy. That would take 30 seconds.
Okay, and I think that would be fair. Right, yeah, I think that would be fair. I think, I don't know if the new system would change that, is it worth doing something until the new system starts?
Let me see if Margaret knows if those links would still work?
Margaret needs to talk.
She's ready, she's eager.
I don't know that it would change the linking. We're going to bring over the video as a whole into the new system, and so it's not going to link to specific items. I think even currently in our system, we don't have it linked to specific items for a lot of our agenda reports, especially the videos that go back really far in the past. So I don't know that it would make a big difference to wait or do it now. The one thing to know that is if we do move forward with it now and link the agenda items when people go back and look at these historically and try to click on those links, will no longer match up.
Okay, so really then, if there's a way of doing some kind of a summarization, I would be okay with that. I don't need it to be, and I certainly, like I said, do not want it to link to 25 different meetings, but I really am up for some input. This isn't a high priority, it was just kind of a nice to have for new council, for residents, to be able to have a little clearer path to be able to learn the history behind something?
I think they usually list the meeting.
Before we get into council discussion, we're going to need to open public comments. If there's no more questions or clarification from Vice Mayor. So the process is the Vice Mayor explains, and then we open public comment. And so we will open public comment if there is any.
If you're in person, please?
If you're in person, please file a speaker card with the form provided on the counter at the back of the chambers. If you're participating via Zoom, please raise your hand. Remarks are limited to three minutes per person and your microphone will be muted after the timer has expired. And no written comments were submitted prior to the 3:00 PM deadline regarding this item. I do have one hand raised. I'll call on Carolina Velaseka. Carolina, go ahead.
Oh my goodness, please, 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 please. If you have to wait for the new system and then link some meetings, that would be fantastic. Because I'll tell you, the search, I have tried searching and you kind of have to be a genius to figure out how to search. You know, if you want to, for example, look at all the meetings that have to do with the wall, you can put wall, but any meeting that talks about a wall will pop up as a meeting to be searchable. And that's not exactly what you want to, what you're looking for. So yeah, please, if this, this would be fantastic for residents. Even those of us that are tech savvy have a hard time with the search, looking for the meetings that we need to reference to educate ourselves before public comments so that we don't make horrific mistakes like saying twerking instead of tweaking, which I did a few weeks ago. So that would be eternally grateful. I would be eternally grateful for that opportunity to be able to click on some links and watch the meetings about items that are ongoing. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no additional hands raised.
Okay, we will close public comments. Now we will move into council discussion. Councilmember Pearson.
Yes, thank you. I love the idea. You know, I'm the queen of saying let's add, make everything more accessible for our residents. And I like the idea of the hyperlinks to the videos, especially as a new council member. I know that I, you know, probably councilmen or elements will know this, can probably attest to this as well. Getting the institutional knowledge requires us to do deep dives, which I know that we've both done to find out more issues and watching old videos or reading old agendas. And it does become arduous to go through the amount of information that we have. The issue that I have are to some specifics in, I don't know if it's how it's written here on our agenda, but I think some of the things that it's vague as to relevant or recent. It becomes vague as to definitions of what's relevant to one resident may not be relevant to another resident. Also recent, it doesn't quantify in time how recent or how not recent we're going back in time. Some of the things that have been decided on, specifically, for example, tonight when we talked about the dryers, some of those agreements began in 2015. And, well, not the dryers, but some of our new equipment that's out started in 2015. And so how far back do we go? How, because it would be relevant to me to find out that information today when we're talking about spending a large amount of money. So I like the idea, what I would prefer is if we had some form of a table of content that talked, that said, you know, and maybe this comes up new system, that specifically said, you know, you know, sound wall at, and it gave a location, Highway 4, or something where we can specifically type in details and it populate those videos, it populate those agenda items versus having to go through and try to figure out which ones are which or where they might be. I think at some point, so my only drawback, or in discussion, my only ask would be more definitive. What does recent and relevant mean if we're not going to be expansive as to having like a table of content?
Most agenda items, you put the sequence of meetings, like some, so the meeting dates are there, it's just the link is not there. But you always have the sequence of meetings. I mean, I am concerned about, I mean, I know I drive a lot of workload, so I am concerned about the workload. So I think that's up to you guys because I think we talked about municipal codes, which you always list the municipal code too. I just, I mean, I don't know, I don't need it. I look up the code and I go to the municipal code. You schedule, you put down the meetings on the agenda. I go back to those meetings and watch them. The only time I ask you for meetings is when things come up that are not on the agenda. That's when I do reach out to you because the search is really bad. But I think for meetings, you guys do a great job of listing the dates of the meetings and the municipal code. It's only, I think I only come to you when it's not on an agenda. So I'm fine, but I also used to look through municipal code a lot before I wasn't even elected. So I'm used to it.
And I'll just weigh in on what the comments were. Us having staff try to ascertain what we think is relevant or what is recent is a little precarious. We'd rather not be put in that situation of guessing what you think would be relevant or recent. And I would want to just call on, I think Alexis volunteer you to share. She sometimes has very substantial staff reports with a lot of prior actions, especially on land use items. What might be the impact to your department and what might you recommend?
I think the biggest impact would be if we didn't have clarity and we had one of those staff reports that had, you know, 20 different meetings, which is possible on a lot of development applications. That's what would create staff time, additional staff time is just trying to figure out. We don't want to be accused of hiding it. So once you start putting the links in, if you only put some in and there's no criteria, we wouldn't want to be accused of hiding the ball or, you know, leaving a link out because we didn't want that meeting to be, you know. So that's what would create the most time is just trying to figure it out. If there were explicit criteria, it would be really straightforward, every meeting on what to do. Whether it's the one link to where all meetings can be found on the website or the last five meetings. Or, you know, if we had some criteria, I think it wouldn't be a great burden on staff. But not having criteria, I think, would just require more thinking, more time.
So I like the idea of a link to the summary on the site, if that's what you're talking about, which would have everything.
A link to the main page that all agendas, whatever date you want to find can be found. That would be the easiest and most straightforward. One link and just look up the date.
So I could share my screen just to show you what I think you're.
And I think, I think your points are invalid when it comes to criteria because every single development is going to have a different, I mean, we could say if the discussion lasted longer than a half hour, then it's valid, but then that means somebody has to go back and make sure that that was within that timeframe. So I'm completely open to other council suggestions, staff suggestion. If this is not something that's feasible, based on like the fact that the criteria is too difficult to determine, then like I said, it's a nice to have, it's not a necessary to have.
I think it's entirely feasible. I think just a criteria would help us implement it, right? And just a little consistently across all of our divisions, all of our departments, all the different types of projects that you see, they all pretty much have a background section. Some of ours might be longer because some development projects can go on for 20 years. Some CIP projects can go back that far. So I think it's entirely feasible. You know, to me, I always think simple is best in terms of, you know, communicating to the public. And a lot of hyperlinks might be a lot to navigate. They have the dates. If we can just direct them where to find the information on the website, that might be the best because I'm also worried it will change. So public, so staff reports we publish right now with links, a year from now, those links are no longer going to be valid if we're changing our system. But if we just tell them where on the website to find that information, that you can redirect that one link to the new website probably, I'm speaking for IS now, versus having 20 links in a staff report that are all dead a year from now.
That's completely valid.
And I will say, Vice Mayor, that when they changed the website, I had like saved links on all my municipal codes for housing.
On my bookmark, I had a bunch of, and they're all dead. Yeah. So that is a very timely topic because it's happening now. So yeah, I would amend my request to follow that kind of a guideline instead. So there isn't this variable that we can't really pin down to say that it's a link to the website, which is going to be more searchable for everything at one time. Is that clear?
So the agenda page of the website where you just have to pick which body and then which date, right?
Yeah, I mean, it's, that's basically.
And I guess we're going to share Alexis's screen.
Yeah, Margaret, if you could, sure.
If we do a hyperlink to that webpage in every agenda, including consent and discussion, future agenda item requests, et cetera, that would be the easiest?
Can you click full calendar real quick?
Let me put my glasses on.
I'm sorry, upper right corner.
I see it now, thank you.
I like this look because it has the year. And many times you guys go back a lot of years and if people don't know, like, don't know that full calendar means all the years, now they could click on the year that they want. If you're like, you know, your meeting goes back to 2016 or something.
I like that, that's even better. Yep.
This, yeah.
As long as that.
Definitely like that, yeah.
If we copy that link, if that's better than, different than the one that was previously up there, as long as it's that one.
Yeah, it's its own link.
I know if you pick the body of city council, but you share that link, it just defaults to all bodies again, so.
Yeah.
Considering some of the meetings are planning commission or Parks and Rec or whatever, it would be, yeah.
Yep.
So and I think this trains the public on where to find this information, you know, so they get used to the hub for all the boards and council and commissions. They know where to find the information.
That makes sense. Thank you.
I have a question, but you might stop me if I'm off. So can we do this, you always list the municipal code. Can we do the same thing for municipal code? Just put the link to the homepage of the municipal code?
You're right.
So if the topic is hyperlinks, I can't amend that myself right now either, huh?
Staff was very responsive to your specific request in the agenda item. But if you want to discuss that at a future time, we're more than happy to, of course.
It's not an agenda item right now.
It's not on the agenda right now, but we are, we are happy to have the discussion in the future. We understand the trend that the council is asking for. And I think what I've heard you say tonight is that in response to council, excuse me, Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor, Mayor's request, you'd like the motion to be that you would include a hyperlink to the general meeting calendar in the full calendar view for this particular request, in my understanding.
That is correct and I would make that motion. What she said.
And I'll second.
We have a first and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Okay, moving on to item E2.2, future agenda item request from Councilmember Pearson for city council discussion of and possible direction to staff related to the research of the former REI tenant building located at 2475 Sand Creek Road, Brentwood, to be used as a possible location for a youth center. Councilmember Pearson.
Well, this was turning over those rocks, right? Trying to see where we can possibly get a youth center. I do like, you know, the ideas that were presented. If we can possibly give facilities at no cost to us because of our agreements, that's even better. So this was just trying to find out some research and I think I'd probably rather redirect attention to those free sites now that we've talked about them. So yeah, that's pretty much it.
Okay, does Steph understand that?
If you would just want to withdraw your request, but I will just give you a brief update. We are often trying to find tenants for that site. Had a recent conversation with the property manager and they shared that they're currently working with the prospect. So that is exciting news. They say that every now and again and we hopefully one lands and signs the dotted line. But that facility may be taken anyway. But appreciate the consideration that if we can find other sites that work better, we'll keep focused on that.
So I'm happy to withdraw.
Can I ask a quick question? And I think that site had the challenge of there's liquor licenses within a certain amount of feet. And that's against our code. I mean, just, I was thinking about that when I was looking at it.
Well, if the request has officially been withdrawn, then I don't think we need to get any further into the issue. I'm not aware that we have a formal process for acknowledging a withdrawal. But if you want to dot your i's and cross your t's, you could make a motion to withdraw it and see where that goes.
I'd like to make a motion to withdraw my request.
I'll second that.
We have a first and a second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous? Okay, we'll move on to item E2.3, future agenda item request from Mayor Bryant for city council discussion of and possible direction to staff related to the possible speaker series forum featuring seniors and residents of the city. And in order to explain this, part of the motivation has been, over the years, I have met some of the most amazing, profoundly influential people that live here in our community, many of them in the senior community, but not all. One of the examples was Mr. Arnold from our recent council meeting, celebrating and receiving the acknowledgement for Black History Month. I would love personally the opportunity to sit and hear experiences, life stories, ask questions of individuals of that caliber. And so potentially partnering with the library because I know that they also bring in speaker series as well. I don't necessarily want to put a heavy load on our Parks and Recreation staff, but this is something I think that all of our community could benefit from. And maybe, you know, twice a year, not something that's an overload, but maybe bi-yearly, we could have this opportunity to be educated and speak to. And not necessarily just limited to our residents as speakers, but focus on our residents and if there's someone that lives in a contiguous community very near to us, that is extremely historically influential and I just, one of the things that we are losing very quickly are the ability to listen to the people that were there on issues that we're still, we're still dealing with. Some very vital issues in our culture, in our society. And there is no better teacher, in my opinion, than someone that was there. And they can speak to what it meant then and what it means now. And so that was the thought along this line. And so at this time, I will open public comments.
If you're in person, please file a speaker card on the form provided at the counter at the back of the chambers. If you're participating via Zoom, please raise your hand. Remarks are limited to three minutes per person and your microphone will be muted after the timer has expired. And no written comments were submitted on this item prior to the deadline today. And I have no speaker cards and there's no hands raised in Zoom.
Okay, at this time, we'll close public comment, open council discussion.
I've always had this, I mean, I've worked with older adults for a long, long, long time and I've always had this fantasy of bringing people exactly like what you're talking about into the schools, into the social studies and the racial equity classes and the science classes and anything that someone could speak to and teach. Now, I'm not on the school board, maybe I should have run through that. But I do love the idea. And I think the 75th anniversary is kind of a, it's actually a good time to launch something like that. But I would say maybe this year, since there's so much going on, just one. I love the idea of partnering with the library. I think that's fantastic. I mean, I think you could invite other parties to take part and help with the planning. It could be something that the library owns, but I do like the idea. I think it's fantastic. I've always thought like Vietnam vets who've lived through it, the ones that are willing to talk about it that haven't, you know, been experiencing PTSD would be a really wonderful way for kids to learn the reality of it. Maybe not the real young ones, but the ones who could accept that. So I don't know how much time and investment something like this would cost, but I do have to say I love the idea.
I agree with our Vice Mayor and our Mayor. I think this is something that when I talk about celebratory events, I think that this aligns with it. I loved hearing Mr. Arnold speak. I was so excited. I think I was back here by Councilmember Mendoza saying, oh, I went to Tuskegee and he's talking about the Tuskegee Irman and I wish all of our students can know about that. And then also listening to Barbara Geis talk about the history of our transit and how she started things. I was moved by hearing her speak. But I think also, you know, there's something to learn from our residents who went through something, whether it be a speaker series on Black History Month or the experience or Holocaust survivors or veterans or just, I mean, all kinds of things. But I think also our youth could be a part of this speaker series. I'd love to see this be something that, I don't know if this goes beyond the scope of what you're thinking, that we partner with our senior center as well, but also our youth commission. I heard one of our residents, a young lady who is now at Heritage, but was at Adams at the time, speak in front of a crowd of over 80 women in Atlanta from Brentwood on women's empowerment. And she was so phenomenal that I was so proud to be a Brentwood resident hearing this 14-year-old young lady, Ms. Farinas, talk about women's empowerment and the nonprofit organization she started to help underserved communities in the city of Brentwood. So I love this idea and I thank you for presenting this because I think it just expands our inclusivity and our diversity. because I think it just expands our inclusivity and our diversity as a city. So, so thank you, and I support it.
Yeah, I agree. It's a great idea. Because, I mean, you both, you brought it up, but she's been talking about it, so you guys have been all about it. I think of like the Stonebargers, and even their story on their barn was like so great and how long it's been here. Or someone like Daphne Muse, who just had Angela Davis, the activist, at her house, right, in Brentwood. So I think there's a lot of people in Brentwood that we could highlight, and I think they'd be more than happy to speak.
Sorry? I do agree. As far as educating or teaching with police academies, we went as far as taking academy classes down to the Museum of Tolerance. And I think some of the most impactful information they gathered was listening to those Holocaust survivors, listening to people that have actually already experienced it. And you can't get a better education than that. It hits right to home. So thank you for bringing it up.
Well, at this time, do I have a motion? Okay.
We just would like to have staff spend time and resource on this topic, on the speaker series topic, and come back with some ideas about how to facilitate it.
I second that motion.
Okay, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, it's unanimous. Okay, and I just have one more motion. But before we do, I would like to adjourn tonight in honor of Barbara Geis. The list of accomplishments and the many years of dedicated service to our community was very abbreviated. There's almost no way to list everything that she's been involved in. She had the Health Hut downtown for many, many, many years, several other businesses in town. Just a wonderful person and representative. And she was one of the very first, very few women mayors in Contra Costa County. So she was definitely a groundbreaker for many, many different areas. And having had the opportunity to work with her on Tri Delta Board for a few years now, she is in her 90s and is as sharp as any of us. And so it's just a joy. So if we could dedicate this adjournment in honor of Ms. Barbara Geis, I would greatly appreciate it. Do I have a motion for adjournment?
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a first and a second. All in favor? Aye.
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 We are adjourned. Thank you.